Okay, so this is the August ten meeting of the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Meeting um. Tonight Jeff Bridget is the chair, staff is Diane Glumbosky, Deb Jones, Bruce Lofgren. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight. If you want to address the commission, you need to raise your virtual hand. On an Apple device, you can find that at the top of your screen on a PC. It's at the bottom. And if you're on the phone, it is star nine.
Okay, I'll call the Planning and zoning Commission. Regular meeting to order. First item is roll call. You see Michael Kane, Sue Sutherland, Kevin Fittable, Halzahn. So I see. Uh so uh so uh have Kevin sit for Barbara Tarbox.
Got it. Thanks, Chair.
So you get extra pay tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it. May need it in my retirement.
My hazardous duty pay, right? So the first items on the meeting are public hearings. The first one is SPEC three seventy-three Rogers Development. Eleven fifty-four Paquonic Road continued. If the applicant is here.
Yeah, it looks like the applicant's here.
Yeah, presentation.
We reading the notice?
Uh we read that last time. It's a continued. This is a continuation of the public hearing. So let's save your. Your voice for the next one.
Next two.
Next two.
All right. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you. You can start, Seamus, and you can share a screen if you'd like.
Perfect. Oh, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Seamus Brand. I am a professional engineer in Connecticut. I work for Larrero Engineering Associates, and I'm representing the applicant. Rogers Development. Jonathan and Jack Rogers. I'm not sure if they're with us tonight for their application located at eleven fifty-four Paquonic Road. In Groton, most of you are probably familiar with the site. It's the former Connecticut School of Massage Therapy. Building is still there. It's just north of Route one. East of Buttington Road and west of the the town park located at twelve oh eight Paquonic Road. Before I get started, this this is a public hearing for a special permit. And a site plan application. As you know, the special permit was opened at the last month's meeting. We asked to continue it immediately because we um. A- after the property had been sitting there vacant for a number of years, finally had an inquiry to potentially lease the space. So we just continued the application while they worked through that. That ended up falling through. Now we are again coming through with our application. This is the first presentation for this application before you. Um, again, this is a special permit and a site plan. The reason for the special permit application is um per section four point one. And sections five point one dash eight H. To convert the existing non-residential building into a residential building. Right now it was it was leased as a commercial space previously, and they are looking to convert that into five two-bedroom residential apartments. So based on the regulations that requires a special permit. Uh, we are located in the MBC district, which um I believe this may be one of your first ones coming through at the MBC. And you'll notice some little nuances of what we submitted several months ago versus what was approved in tax amendments last month. Versus what we're proposing here before you. So there's a little bit of complexity, just um kind of hatching through some of these some of these items. Um, so we, as I mentioned, we're in the MBC. We're also in the CAM, but we're CAM exempt per section nine point five dash five B dot two. Um, and nine point five dash five point B dot three. With those two exemptions um for the CAM application. I'm sorry, CAM application. So it's all right now. I will share my screen. I'm doing a whole bunch of talking without any site plan before you. Right? I will share. Can everybody see this screen before you, the plan before you? Excellent. So this is the existing conditions plan. Mentioned this here to the east is the top rotten um park right now. And this is our current site. It's about eleven and a half acres. If I zoom all the way out, you can see the exterior. It's about eleven and a half acres. A lot of that in the center is occupied by about five and a half acres of wetland. The front north, I guess, south southwest corner of the site is the developed portion. This was developed back in two thousand two. It's part of the approved site plan um from two thousand two. So there was an existing structure up front and existing uh single-family residential. It's a large addition built to the um to the rear of that building. As you can see by my cursor, this was the addition. It was converted entirely into a commercial space. With that commercial space, there was a large parking lot installed. Um, part of that parking lot was paved. Part of that was gravelled, um and that was part of the condition of the approval and it also had a ZBA application approved. Uh, in order to be within fifty feet of the title wetland. So this was, this is essentially what was approved back then. This is the current existing condition. The building is approximately eighty-two hundred square feet of total gross floor area. Uh seventy-two hundred seventy-two fifty square feet of foot footprint. And as I mentioned, the parking lot is partially paved, uh partially gravelled for a total of eighty-six parking spaces currently. Um, there's, the building is served by public water, public sewer, electric off of Paquonic Road. There are two freestanding signs. We have frontage along Buttington Road, as you can see, and along Paquonic Road. Which is where the two freestanding signs come from. There is one on the eastern side of the development where there's a two-way entrance. You can see signed with ground lights, and there's also one on the western side where there's a one-way exit. So there's two signs along the frontage and um. Those are about fifty-nine square feet each, where a hundred square feet is allowed based on the footage that we have. Um, there's several parking lot lights installed across the property, across the parking lot. That was part of the approved plan. And there was substantial storm, I'm sorry, landscaping improvements um installed as well. They're not shown on this plan. They are shown on the site plan. But uh in total, there's thirteen existing street um street trees, eleven existing parking lot buffer trees, and thirteen parking island trees. Which I'll show you on this plan here, which is the site plan. Which we'll get to more in depth in a moment here. Um, but as I mentioned, there's um substantial tree coverage around the site as it as it exists. There's also, as part of the oh two thousand two plan, there were some stormwater improvements installed. There is a Coltech Recharger three thirty HD subsurface infiltration system installed to in infiltrate the roof runoff from the um from the existing building. And there was a an existing V two B one stormwater treatment system unit installed in the parking lot um to treat the runoff generated from the parking lot. So those were installed, and that's the current existing addition. There's also a concrete dumpster pad with uh an enclosure around the the existing dumpster. And and as I mentioned, several, I I believe eighty-six total parking spaces. Um, so that was the existing addition. What we're proposing to do, as I mentioned, is fairly straightforward, I would like to think. It's, we're we're looking to convert the existing building in the same footprint that it is, same gross floor area, just convert it from a commercial space. Into residential units. It'll be two five-bedroom units. Uh, we won't be changing any of the utilities. All of those will remain as it as existing. Uh, we are in the MBC, so we're proposing some public use space. As you can see, there's some pretty substantial area shown, which we'll get into in a moment. And also a community, I'm sorry, recreation slash community space to the rear of the building for the residence. Some of the site improvements, like I mentioned, it's about twenty-one hundred square feet of community rec space for the residents. A little over fifty thousand square feet shown in public use space. Um, a new dumpster enclosure, the one that was there is 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 um broken, has been damaged. So we'll replace that. We'll expand the concrete dumpster slightly um to fit two dumpsters on there. Um, and we're proposing two new bike racks along the front of the building. As you can see here, there's a bike rack typical times five. Um, so that those are proposed along the 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 front of the building. The parking lot, since we have eighty-six spaces, where we only actually need a minimum of seven and maximum of eight, we had thirteen shown on here. One of Bruce's comments is that we should show a maximum of eight or a minimum of seven per the regulations of when we submitted, so we'll reduce that to a maximum of eight spaces. We have thirteen shown. We kept a row of ten here with one handicap space and two additional handicap spaces along the face of the building. So um part of some of Bruce's comments are to revise that, which we can certainly do on the next revision. The landscaping, none of that will change. Um, all of the trees that are currently existing will remain. As I mentioned, utilities, stormwater, um those will all be the same as well. Um, the signage is not necessary for right now, but uh we're not proposing to remove the signage right now. They may use it in the future for the building or one or both, which we could obviously come before the um come before the the land use commission. Come before you guys, the commission again. Um, if those, if the size changes, I don't believe it will. But we're proposing to keep those as is and possibly just replace the placards that are on there. Lastly, the lighting within the pavement area, as I mentioned, a lot of the pavement area is proposed to be removed. Um, a lot of the lighting in the pavement area or even the gravel area, gravel parking lot area that will no longer be used will also be removed. So in terms of the public use space. We submitted the special permit and the site plan application several months ago. We do know that um the tax amendment was approved by the commission uh last month, I believe, to reduce the public use space uh public use requirements. Which we are very thankful for. It made this site, it's in particular, very difficult to develop and show. It for a fifty thousand square foot public use space, but the reason we didn't. When you said Bruce said indicated we can pull our application and and re-notify and resubmit. Uh, what we decided to do instead is to just move forward with what we have presented, um what we've submitted. Because it's both a special permit and the site plan application. Special permit is the uh is the public, uh I'm sorry, is the. Uh, required public notification. So we wanted to move forward with that portion of it at a minimum, because if we do, um and we expect to come forward with a site plan modification. To modify the site plan based on the current, soon-to-be-current um zoning regulations. That will only be a site plan modification, and it won't require another special permit. Special permit is just to switch from commercial space to residential. This way they can start doing their renovations to the interior of the building while submitting a site plan modification to reduce the public use space. So that is ultimately, um assuming we can get um a positive result, we would like to. A a site plan modification would be forthcoming. Consistent with the tax amendment that was recently approved. So that's the reason for the excessive amount of public use space. It's because we had submitted just prior to the tax amendment being approved. Um, hopefully that is clear enough. I know as I was kind of um rambling a little bit there, but hopefully uh if there are any questions, I can certainly take those. Um, at this time, um. Oh, actually, one thing I should show is the public use space. We did show a exhibit, show how that public use space would be used. A- any modification in the future will be similar. Uh, we would like to incorporate walkways and and grass areas, landscape areas. So what we have before you is some trees, some walkways, um. Kind of scattered throughout, so um public, the public can access the property from along the frontage of the property. So ultimately, that will be the goal. That is what we have before you. But I, so we're, it doesn't seem like we're hiding anything. We would likely submit a site plan modification in the future. Um, but this is what we have before you today. If there are any questions at this time, or first, if I miss anything, um please feel free to to chime in, but other than that, we can open up for some questions.
Well, I'll turn it over to the staff for their presentation and open it to the public and then the commission.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Bruce Lofgren from the Office of Planning and Development Services. Um, Mr. Moran did a good job of explaining the applications. I won't um go over everything he just mentioned, but just a few. Points that I I'd like to fill in. Um, so this is the MBC district. This is, I believe, the first application you've seen with this newly created district. The mixed-use village district. Um, what do what do we, what are the um goals of this district are, you know, pedestrian-friendly, small-scale, village-type developments? It's also encouraged that historic buildings are preserved and um. And restored and, you know, reused. And in this application, this building is from the early eighteen hundreds, and they're proposing. Five um units. It's going to be a multifamily development. Each unit will have two bedrooms in it. Um, so. Just to touch on the public space a little bit here, so right now. Where we are, regulations are written on is that it for sites over two acres, um they are required to have ten percent. Of the site dedicated as public space. So the site is about um five hundred thousand square feet, so they're proposing fifty thousand square feet right now. And part of the reason we amended that that regulation was for sites like this, and so a considerable portion of the site is, well. It extends um to the north from where you see there um and it bought a lot of um Groton utilities land. So. So this will be, yeah, you can see right there in the in the aerial about where it is, uh a lot of wetlands. It's 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 a very large site. But there's only a very small percentage of it, which is upwind, and it's down here and a little bit to the northeast as well. So. Just a few other things. Um, so there are pedestrian connections proposed here. There's an existing five-foot wide sidewalk. Um, it's buffered from Paquonic Road there with a with a landscape strip. Um, so that there's no need to improve any of that in the frontage. Um, the the public space does show benches, some some lighting and some some walkways. Even if they were to come in for a modification later on, which um. Rand said they would, um, they would still need to have all those public amenities. It would just be reduced, but it would still be along the frontage. Um, so the only outstanding things that don't um. Comply with with zoning currently is they have. Uh thirteen spots currently, parking spots, and the maximum allowed in the zone or or with the regulations is eight. So they would have to reduce the this the parking a little bit. Um, and I and I put that as a condition in the draft motion. The other is there are AC condensers on the western side of the building that are currently not screened. You you can't really see them from the site, but um it it is required that they be screened, so we are, I I am. Suggesting that be included in the draft motion as well to address that. Um. Other than that, so they are proposing recreation space for the uh multifamily conversion here. Um, that's in the back of the building in that dashed area. Yeah, other than that, the 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 site is very well escaped. Um, street trees are are present. It conforms with all the landscaping requirements and zoning regulations. And. I think I mentioned this at the beginning of the, when we opened the public hearing last month, but um if I didn't, the mailings were in order. I checked them and uh. Orders were properly notified.
Anything else, Bruce?
No, just that um as Mr. Moran said, this is a special permit and a site plan application. It's required for all. Multifamily conversions such as this, so you will see a site plan application um later on in the meeting.
Okay. So I want anyone on the, in the public that would like to address. This is for issue. You see anybody, Deb?
I do not see any raised hands.
All right, so then we'll open it up to uh. The commission for their questions. Start with you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just have a few uh comments that I I would also like to see that uh air conditioner is screened. And uh the handicap parking, it it appears that there's. If you can, are there three spots? Is that what we're looking at?
That's correct. There's three.
And are those included in the count of eight? So it would be three plus five, or is it?
If they would be included in the count of eight, so we would ultimately end up reducing those to the minimum likely either. We'll probably keep the two uh handicap spaces along the face of the building and just go with six spaces um out in the parking lot.
And is that sufficient? For five two-bedrooms?
Yeah, you need um, it's ten percent for multifamily. Uh, in Connecticut, they just passed this. It's ten percent of the units um have to be type A, I believe, which requires a uh handicap space. So we only need technically a half a space, which would be one space.
Per unit?
No, one space, based on the total number of multifamily units. So one, one is required.
And and it, does it make a difference because this is a commercial? Building? I mean, that's a five units is makes that a commercial property, doesn't it?
No, it'd be, it would be multifamily. There was, there's no commercial um space and and. The structure, or there won't be.
No, no, I don't mean commercial like uh like a business operating, but in a multifamily property, when the property goes from. A three-family or four-family to five, the state regulates that or the town regulates that property in a different way. There are different requirements for multifamily homes that have more units.
I believe it's ten percent of the units of the multifamily units have to be uh type of type A accessible, which requires.
I guess I have my homework.
And and even if it was on commercial, I believe it's one space per um twenty parking spaces, so commercially you said more than twenty or twenty-five parking spaces. I think you need to start having more than one handicap spot.
Okay, and uh. Is this being held to the to Bruce's electric vehicle uh regulation or not?
This is, this is not um a modification would need to.
A modification to the building?
Uh, no, no, so at um a site plan modification in the future. Um, if if they were to come in to modify the site plan to reduce the public space, it would also be easy regulations would come into play.
And is that because this application was made prior to our approval of that regulation?
Yes, this was submitted a few months ago, so yeah, it it would it would still apply to the old regulations.
Can you tell me how much of the pervious cover is being reduced? What percent is going from what to what?
Um, I don't have that, but I can find that out for you.
Definitely considerable, and and the site is.
I know, it seems like it's a big, and I I applaud you for doing that. It's a good thing in this area to do that.
Give you, can I just, can I find out how much this pavement area is that we're moving rather than the total number? So it would be easier to do that if that's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just like trying to get a an idea because it's it seems like it's pretty significant, and that's important here, I think.
Yep, of course, let me figure that out for you. Oh, you know what? It might actually be in the application itself. Actually, it'll be easier this way. One second.
Application says that the existing impervious law coverage is thirty-four thousand foot feet. Doesn't say. Every use, one of your base. Yeah, okay, I see.
So the the um, so I think what happened, Bruce, is we submitted the application first with um the full parking lot to remain, and then we reduced it. And that's why we didn't show the reduction, so that the southern parking lot area is just under thirteen thousand square feet. If you combine that with the gravel, which is not impervious, but it is, you know, just a partially, um, I guess it's not grass. It's about fifteen thousand five hundred square, we're moving about fifteen thousand five hundred square feet of parking lot area. Thirteen thousand square feet of that is pavement.
Very good, alright. And then the only other thing I uh, the handicap access to the building from that spot, there's sidewalks that are appropriate, I'm assuming.
Correct, and the 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 walk is flush with the the pavement there.
And through the doorway and like that. Are all the units handicap accessible?
Uh, they don't all have to be. Um, I believe the way it's laid out right now, they all can be, um, but they don't, they're, it's not required to be.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you, Seamus.
You're welcome.
Hal, do you have any questions, comments?
I actually have absolutely no concerns about this. Um, regarding to the parking, I mean, very often I I look at the the total number and get a little concerned. Because what happens when one unit has a party and there's an extra ten people showing up? Where do you put the cars? So I have a real problem with that limitation of nine. On Paquonic at that point, uh the right of way is really wide, the roadway is really wide, and you can actually just park on the street. I'll be fine in there. So I think this is, this is good in all ways. I understand, Paul. I'm a little, seems a little peculiar to leave that tall. Medical office sign kind of sitting there. I know you'll change the text on it, but it's a little strange to have a a five-unit uh multiplex unit. Have a giant sign, a giant, but you're a large sign up there. So I'd be all in favor of kind of. Getting rid of that or. Doing something to completely make it disappear until you want to do something else in there, but it just doesn't belong in front of five units. Rather than that, I'm I'm fine with everything there.
Susan?
No, I um I went and drove and looked at the site and everything and the plan, and I'm fine with everything. Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, do you have any questions?
Um, no, so I know the site really well. So I just have a question for Bruce though. Did we limit the amount of parking? For instance, like everyone else has said, it seems a might light as far as parking is concerned, whereby in two bedrooms, I could see, you know, ten or something like that. So did we limit the amount of parking for this particular applicant?
Oh, well, it it's in our zoning regulations that we uh, we have a minimum and maximum um allowance for parking, and the maximum is one point six spaces per a two-bedroom unit. So that comes out to eight. So so yes, we we did limit the amount of parking um the applicant can provide here.
Right, that's what I thought. Thank you, Chair. That's all I had.
Okay. Now, I didn't have any other questions. So does anyone see any reason to uh keep the public hearing for the uh. Special permit? Well, open.
I do not.
Does any, does Stan see any problem?
Did you ask for public comment?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Deb says there wasn't anybody there.
Okay.
We saw no, no hands raised.
Hands raised.
No, none.
So if not, then I'll move to uh close the uh public hearing for the special permit. It's been seconded. All those in favor, is there any discussion on the motion? None, no, a vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, then we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is uh REG A twenty-one dash oh two propane fuel text amendment. The applicant would. Like to make a presentation.
I'm promoting the applicant. I'm promoting the applicant.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a partner and I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Tobin Carberry in New London, Connecticut. It's a pleasure to be before you again this evening. I represent a company called Hokon Gas Incorporated, which is a sixty-nine-year-old family. Company here in Connecticut, which has six locations throughout Western Connecticut. Joining me tonight on the call as well is the president of Hokon Gas, Dave Gable. Uh, my client has submitted an application to the commission through its affiliated company, thirteen eighty-seven Gold Star LLC. And they've applied for a zoning text amendment. To allow fuel dealers with storage. Uh, limited to propane gas only, and that's very important, to be located within your water resource protection district overlay zone. Uh, Hokon Gas is an industry leader in providing propane gas to commercial and residential customers in this state, and they're actually looking to expand outside. Of Western Connecticut and hopefully establishing a facility in Eastern Connecticut in the town of Groton. Uh, as you're likely aware, and we did submit with our application.
Can I interrupt? I may say a mistake that we should hear the the notice for the public hearing first.
Yeah, you did when I asked that, so sorry. Yes.
Yeah. So if you want to read that.
We give a break here. I'll write this, read this in. Notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Zoning Regulation Amendment Number R E G A two one tech zero two. Zoning Regulation Text Amendment to Section four point one Table of Permitted Uses and Section six point four tech. Nine point D point two. Point fuel dealer. To permit fuel dealers with propane fuel storage in the Water Resource Protection District, W R P D. One, three, eight, seven, Gold Star Limited Liability Corporation applicants. Zoom meeting link will be posted in the town's website meetings calendar. Or it can be attended by visiting W W dot zoom dot U S webinar ID eight, seven, four, four, one, four, eight, four, one, six, nine, password two, one, zero, six, eight, two, or by phone. One, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two. Access to electronic equipment at the Town Hall Annex for the purposes of attending or participating in the meeting shall be provided to any member of the public who provides a written request. To the Office of Planning and Development, not less than twenty-four hours. Prior to the meeting, the applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the Planning Department, one thirty-four. Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, zero, six, three, four, zero. And at the Office of the Town Clerk, forty-five Fort Hill Road, Groton, Connecticut. Opposed. Draft zoning regulations can also be viewed at. HTTPS. Colon slash slash W W W dot Groton, G R O T O N C T dot G O V slash departments slash P L A N D E V slash. Pending apps. Dot P H P. All persons having interest in the application are invited to attend, comment, and provide testimony as and evidence. Dated thirtieth day of July, twenty twenty-one, Groton, Connecticut.
All right, thank you, Hal. Okay, Mr. Sweeney, you can. Return to your presentation.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate taking care of the formalities. As I was saying, Hokon Gas is looking to expand its operations out of Western Connecticut and hopefully have a facility within the town of Groton. Uh, we did submit with our applications a fact sheet about propane gas. As you're likely aware, propane gas is a safe and efficient fuel source. It's wisely used in communities across the United States in various different applications. Uh, and it is still a fossil fuel, but it's also considered what we call a transitional fuel. And as we shift to a more renewable-based fuel economy. It's a vastly superior alternative to fuel oil or gasoline, which, as you know, when they are combusted amid much higher levels of pollutants in greenhouse gases than propane. Most importantly, though, and really the reason we're here tonight seeking this text amendment is propane is a non-toxic compound. It doesn't threaten the environment in the event of a release. Uh, and it poses no threat whatsoever to groundwater or surface water supplies. Uh, my client has acquired some property here in Groton, uh, through their holding company, which is the applicant thirteen eighty-seven Gold Star LLC along Gold Star Highway. Uh, and they do hope to establish a propane dealer facility at that location sometime in the near future. Um, but we're not here for that application tonight. Uh, we've submitted a text amendment. And as you know, text amendments are applications of general applicability to all properties affected by that, those changes. Right now, under your regulations, fuel dealers with storage on site are only permitted in your C R, I M, and I G zoning districts. Now, while my client's site is zone C R, it's also located within your W R P D overlay zone. And as if you're familiar with the regulations for your Water Resource Protection District. Um, those regulations prohibit all fuel dealers regardless of the fuel that they're actually engaged in selling. Uh, there's no distinction in the regulations in the W R P D between fuel, oil, gasoline, and propane. And and that's sort of interesting because your regulations for W, uh, the W R P D allow propane tanks in the W R P D zone on their own, either above or even below ground. So a part of your regulations always already recognizes this fact. Um, that that this type of fuel doesn't have the same threat to the environment that more traditional fossil fuels do. And and I think the prohibition that's there makes sense. Um, you know, certain fuels such as gasoline or heating oil. Uh, can contaminate water supplies if they're accidentally released. But as I mentioned, propane is non-toxic. Uh, it's a gas. Uh, it can be safely stored. It can be transported. It can be handled and used. And it proposes no threat to groundwater or surface water bodies. And so by way of the application that's before you tonight, what we're essentially requesting the commission to do is add an exception. To the W R P D overlay zone for propane-only fuel dealers with storage. Acknowledging that this type of a fuel dealer doesn't propose a threat to water supply or other tradition as other traditional fuel storage facilities might pose. Specifically, um, we've submitted a regulation amendment that proposes modifications to Section four point one, which is your table of permitted uses. And we would just change the notation in that table to promote, to remove the blanket prohibition on all types of fuel dealers with storage. And at least allow it to be allowed in certain conditions specifically for propane dealers only. And then we also are making changes to Section six point four. Dash nine point D point two. To provide for propane-only fuel dealers with storage in the W R P D, subject to additional conditions and restrictions. Now, we met with your staff and had multiple conversations about this amendment. Uh, and we actually developed these additional conditions and restrictions in close consultation with with them. And we understand that subsequent to our formal application to the commission, staff developed several additional changes that they wanted to the language. And I think in your staff report tonight, you'll see that they've included some suggestions for additional changes to the language that was proposed. We've reviewed these recent modifications to the language, and we have no objection to any of them as proposed by your planner, Mr. Lofgren. Um, and in fact, we would urge you to adopt tonight, uh, this text amendment with those staff recommendations as presented. Um, just to be clear, I want to just, you know, read and direct the record exactly the language of Section. Um, six point four dash nine point D two, and this includes the staff modifications that are now being proposed. And so this new section will read as follows. Number two, fuel dealer. All fuel dealers are prohibited with the exception of those that meet the definition of fuel dealer without storage. Or, and this is new language, those that meet the definition of fuel fuel dealer with storage and that are further limited to propane fuel storage only. Fuel dealers with propane storage shall also comply with the following. Number one, gasoline or diesel fuel storage shall not be allowed on the site. Fuel types other than propane shall not be stored on site. Two, all vehicle maintenance shall take place in an enclosed building or off-site. Any fuel dealer that also includes vehicle service and repair minor must also must follow the conditions for that use in addition to these conditions. Three, vehicle washing shall not be allowed on the site. Four, propane storage tanks shall not be placed in the front yard and must be screened from the public view per Section eight point one dash seven. Point B five. And then finally, the number of fuel delivery trucks stored on site shall be limited to no more than ten. The storage of these trucks shall be located on an impervious surface and comply with all other requirements of Section six point four. And then finally, we're not changing this, but we, it's it's listed on the on the 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 motion that was proposed. All stormwater runoff must be treated per Section six dash four point six point D point one before any overland flow over pervious surfaces. You know, I would add also add that, you know, my client is committed to to the propane industry and developments in that industry. Uh, he's also very environmentally sensitive and he seeks to try to create a sustainable business in his own operations. Uh, Hokon Gas actually recently purchased six propane-fueled delivery trucks for its fleet. Uh, and over the next several years, it will be phasing in more propane-fueled delivery trucks as the legacy delivery trucks, the gasoline and the uh, diesel oil trucks are replaced. The company's internal goal long term is to convert their entire fleet, which is about forty trucks right now, across the entire state to propane-fueled vehicles over the next decade or so. Um, and so the text amendment we're seeking tonight, we feel is modest in scope. We also tailored it very narrowly so that it's really specific to the propane dealer industry. Which from our perspective does not warrant the prohibition currently in place in the W R P D overlay zone. As I said before, propane tanks are allowed both above and below ground already in your W R P D. The only thing that's prohibited is propane dealers. Um, propane fuel dealers from our perspective do not pose any risk to the community's water resources. And therefore, we feel they should be permitted in the W R P D overlay zone. Within established guidelines that I think your staff and and we have crafted and and most recently been modified by the by your staff report. Um, moreover, though, I think the change that we're asking for, not only is it modest and narrowly tailored, but it's consistent with your P O C D. In that it promotes sustainable economic development here in Groton, encourages a business to come and locate in town. Um, it gives residents and businesses choices for cleaner and more efficient fuels during this transitional period. Without compromising important natural resources, our public water supply, or environmental health. You know, I, we firmly believe that propane has a role in this traditional uh transitional economy. And we hope that the commission sees the value of promoting propane as a fuel source here in Groton over traditional heating oil and gasoline options. So thank you for your time tonight and attention. Um, myself and Mr. Gable, who's the president of the company, are available if you have any questions and we would reserve the right to rebuttal. Thank you.
Rose, uh. I presume you're representing the staff tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Bruce Lofgren again from Office and Planning Development Services. Um. Yeah, I just wanted to add on a few things that Attorney Sweeney mentioned and. There are a few points from my staff memo included in the back. So this is a proposed text amendment. So when reviewing these texts, it's important to look at how this would affect the entire town and the entire zoning regulations, not one particular. So I created a map that I would like to share. It's kind of showing the different areas in town that. It's wood in that. So can everyone see the the map here? Okay, so what I have here is. A map of the town. So the water, the Water Resource Protection District is an overlay district in the town. It encompasses about seventy-seven hundred acres and it's a good portion of the northern half of Groton. Um, here you can see. That the Water Resource Protection District is in blue. This line right here and the zones that currently permit fuel dealers with storage. Are. Right here. So it's the C R zone in red. The I M zoning district in purple. And all the other zoning districts that currently permitted aren't located in the W R P D. So. These are the properties that would be potentially impacted from this text amendment. It's. Um. Dozens of properties, most of them are undeveloped. Some of them aren't. Some are developed. A lot of them are developed before the Water Resource Protection District. But I just wanted to show this map to kind of give an idea of of which properties could be. And the applicant's. Um. Property that they purchased is located on Gold Star Highway over here. Um, so the W R P D was largely rewritten in two thousand and seventeen. Um. It was for the the major text amendment in twenty nineteen. The W R P R P D was amended for. Um, when it was amended, the. Definitions for fuel dealer without storage and fuel dealer with storage were created. Um, it was determined at that time that fuel dealers without storage would be allowed within the W R P D. However, fuel dealers with storage would be prohibited. So as Attorney Sweeney mentioned, they are proposing that fuel dealers with storage or propane only be permitted within W R P D. Uh, I just want to add that this wouldn't allow for propane dealers with storage in different underlying zoning districts that aren't already allowed. This would be a. Permitted use in the C R zoning district. The only difference is that it would be allowed within these properties in the W R R P D. Oh, it's the overlay district that prohibits. It's not the underlying zone. Um. So the other difference. Between, um, the obvious definitions of fuel dealers with stores and fuel dealers without storage outside of the storage of fuel. Is that fuel dealers without storage are limited to only one delivery truck on site. Um, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to. Uh, propose the conditions to modify the number of. Delivery vehicles that could be located on site to better align with what is regulated within W R P D now. So there are several, um. Uses currently. Regulated, prohibited, or allowed with conditions within the W R P D that. Are related to storage of vehicles and this is regulated. Due to concerns of fuel storage, solvent leaks, break in transmission fluids and things like that. Um, so that's why things such as warehouse and distribution, airports, transit stations, hubs, equipment sales. Contractor vehicle parking, construction equipment storage, all those type of uses are either prohibited or highly regulated within the water. Um, which makes sense because, you know, it's a lot of diesel fuel and a lot of contaminants. So. Propane from everything I read and from what the applicant presented in the application and here tonight is a non-toxic. If it leaks, it evaporates into the air and dissipates and it would not negatively affect the. Surface water or the soils underneath the site. However, the storage of the vehicles was the one potentially concerning. Item to staff. So that is why we propose that it be limited to ten vehicles or less. Um, and further, I I made the recommendation that they only be stored on impervious surfaces only. So this would limit it based on little impervious coverage on site, which is. Is limited in the W R P D as well as the ten vehicle. Um. On that, Attorney Sweeney did mention the plan of conservation and development, and I would agree that this text amendment would be a performance with that. It it would tend to encourage sustainable economic development, updates to the W R P D that promotes some protection of the of the drinking water supply. But also creative tools to, you know, promote. Uh, economic development and new ideas that would not negatively impact. Which is the intention of the Water Resource Protection District. Um, I should say that referrals were properly made. And we did receive comments back from the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. They stated that they do not think that this text amendment would have any interministerial impact, any adverse interministerial impact. Um, Groton Utilities also reviewed the proposal and they had, they had no comments. They just said, you know, we will review a site plan even when that comes in subsequent to this proposed text amendment. And the chairman of the. And the chairman of the Conservation Commission um made similar comments that would be relevant to a site plan application and and no concerns. With the um proposed text amendment on hand.
Anything else, Bruce?
Um, no, not now. If there's questions, I have an answer.
Okay. Deb, is there anyone in the public that, is there hands raised?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, and we'll move on to uh any questions from commissioners. Michael. You have any questions?
Unmute, he's muted.
There we go. I would just like to get an idea of what we would expect this to look like. I mean, I I guess there's gonna, I mean, just correct me if I'm wrong. There's gonna be one large tank and then ten. Vehicles that have tanks on them and then smaller tanks that would be distributed to residential places. Or or is my wrong?
Yeah, so so we don't have a full facility design, but there's the requirement that everything that the tank has to be screened. Um, from the front yard. Um, so what I expect that you'll see is a a facility building. With behind, there will be at least one above-ground surface tank large. And then up to ten uh delivery trucks that would be parked on the impervious surface. Talking with my client. Um, it will not be ten to start with. Um, this is new territory for Hokon Gas. So it would probably start with two, three, or four trucks to begin with, and they would only add additional delivery trucks. Um, you know, if demand warrants it, they think the site has a carrying capacity, that is the size of the site when we. Um, take into account area that we need to provide buffers, stormwater controls. We think that ten is 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 the would basically be the use of the site for this site. We don't think we can. Adequately fit more than that. We may never have more than ten. Um, but that would be sort of the best case scenario if Hokon is able to expand in Groton and be successful. So. Um, you know, this is, uh, I'll let Dave uh comment on whether there will be smaller tanks uh on the property. Cause I don't have that answer for you. Um, but again, anything that we have will have to be screened from public view. So it would be behind probably our facility building and wouldn't be visible uh from Gold Star Highway. Dave, do you want to just uh join, just introduce yourself and just comment on on smaller tanks? And whether they would be part of the operation at the property?
Sure.
Just introduce yourself, Dave.
Am I, am I invisible? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I don't see myself there. Uh, sure, so uh. Again, as Attorney Sweeney has mentioned, we've been in the business.
Would you just say your name and?
My name is David Gable. I'm the president of Hokon Gas, H O C O N. My dad, my dad started this business uh almost seventy years ago and. Our largest facility in Norwalk um has ten vehicles, uh uh ten delivery vehicles. Located there. Most of our facilities have between four and six propane delivery vehicles. Uh, there's a limit to the amount of range you what we want to uh maintain and we would have typically that sized facility. With uh fuel tanks in um. In storage for delivery to uh for customers, for homeowners and and uh commercial establishments. And if I if I can't get uh tanks on a timely basis because. Um, the manufacture and distribution of new tanks is is uh. Delayed by about six, six or seven months at this point. I can always go next door to the granite. Uh granite distribution business, which sells uh also sells propane tanks in the adjoining property. So um. We, we've run propane vi- uh we've run propane-powered vehicles since the nineteen eighties. And at some point, uh propane sort of fell out of favor and every everyone in the industry switched to diesel-powered vehicles. But um we've maintained for the for the larger fuel delivery vehicles as opposed to the service. Service and installation uh vehicles, which are significantly smaller. Um, so we've um almost all of our fleet of fifty smaller vehicles runs on propane. I've got some legacy diesel vehicles that we're hurrying to get rid of, and now the industry is moving toward. Uh propane-powered vehicles, which I we uh just. Bought a number of this of them this year with the assistance of um the Department of Energy, Connecticut's Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Which helped pay a grant uh as part of a grant application. In the next two years, uh Cummins Engine Company will be producing a propane-powered engine that. Is the basic engine of a deep uh same engine as the diesel engine, only it's going to be powered with propane. And will have more horsepower and torque than the diesel engine does, producing less emissions. Uh propane is already ninety-six percent less, produces ninety-six percent less emissions than the cleanest diesel vehicle on the market today. And I think when Cummins has that engine, puts that engine out in the marketplace. That you're going to see a transition for uh toward propane for uh for vehicles of the medium and heavy duty size. Uh, and then currently, the the uh under the president, the president's new infrastructure plan. Uh propane has been included for medium and heavy duty vehicles along with electric-powered vehicles. And I think you're going to see um a large number of fleets transition from diesel fuel, which obviously is not a clean fuel. To propane, which uh. Uh currently is about as clean as an electric-powered vehicle when the power comes from a net. Well, from a natural gas-powered facility. And while working on getting renewable propane into the northeast, it's presently being made in uh. In Louisiana and in California. We don't have a facility in this part of the country, but renewable propane will be the future of our industry, which which uh. Has a carbon intensity that is less than that of like uh an electrically powered vehicle from a natural gas power plant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, Mike?
He gets muted again.
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
That's okay. I do it all the time myself.
Someone's got to keep, keep their eye on me. Here, what's the uh, given that uh we're being told that the applicant's biggest facility is ten. Trucks and that most are four to six, what's magic about putting ten on this site? Or ten for this regulation? Why would we not have it a smaller number than that?
Well, I think that the idea is that we hope to be very successful in the Groton marketplace and we hope that this to be. The headquarters for our Eastern Connecticut operations. So we want to be able to have a a si- a facility that is comparable. To our biggest facility in Western Connecticut. And I think, you know, again, that's going to depend on our success in Eastern Connecticut. Um, but we think it's a reasonable number and it's something that it gives us the room to grow. I I think you always want as a business owner. Um, to be successful, you know, you certainly need, you're going to need that, those six, you know, minimum of six to si- to s- to start. But if you want to grow your business, you don't want to have to move it out of town because you have some arbitrary number. So. And we talked about it with staff and and, you know, we also looked at the sites that are available. And ten seemed like a reasonable number for us. It, we don't imagine our site or other sites would really. Uh, in this marketplace would support more than ten and we think that that would be something that would allow us to stay in Groton and grow. And still be successful, not just now, or even a year from now, but five, ten, fifteen years from now. So there is much of an art as there might be a science to that number, but we went back and forth with staff and that was the number that um, you know, that we came to.
And then I just have a question for Bruce. Um. The uh. Would would this regulation, the way it's written, allow for a retail component? So that if there were other uh. Uh propane trucks in Groton operating, would they be able to come in here and fill? Or would that be a separate uh kind of, you know, operation? And then Bruce, um, the does the pervious cover that we're talking about for the parking of these vehicles, is that? Curbed, contained, does it have some sort of a well or something like, you know, like we would do where it would be able to contain any kind of a spill? That might occur? Uh, I just want to, you know, it's not going to be sheet flow, I'm hoping, other than just pervious. I just want to get an idea of what we would expect to see. In that pervious parking area that's supposed to be able to contain these vehicles. That's all. Thank you.
Um, yeah, for the first part, the retail component of that, um, I believe would be allowed and I believe it would be allowed currently in the W R P D. Because fuel dealers um. Well, I I mean, the re- so you you are you talking more um fuel dispensing stations?
Yeah, like a gas station that's selling propane.
Yeah, this this would, this would allow that and and um. And or this, it would be the same concern storage. So if you're dispensing fuel, if you're dispensing propane, I mean, it would be bad. So. Instead of being. But um. Yes, that that, I I don't see anything that would um limit a a fuel disp- retail sale, fuel dispensing.
Okay, and I don't, I'm not talking about this applicant or this potential applicant specifically, just in like how our regulation would read. It would allow them for that kind of the gas uh propane distribution.
But could I speak, could I speak to that just quickly? Because you have filling stations as a use in the W R P D as a separate use. Above and apart from um from fuel dealers. So what we're doing here has, won't change at all what the regulations are. For filling stations, sort of the retail sale. I don't believe that that's something that we're proposing at the site, but if we were, you have regulations in place.
Yeah, right, I realize.
And then also, you know, the second half of your question, Mr. Kane, uh and I don't mean to jump in front of you, Bruce, so I apologize, but um. If you, if you read, the last thing I read in the regulation is all stormwater runoff must be treated prior to overland flow. So we have to design, when we come in with a site plan for this site, and we're going to have an impervious surface for where we store our trucks. We have to design some type of containment and treatment in that area to ensure that we're not discharging water to the environment. Off that service until it has been properly cleaned and processed. And so it could, I I I expect it will be curbing. It will likely be some, um, there will be some mechanical. Uh, probably separation. We may have some additional containment. Those are all things to work through in our site plan. We absolutely cannot, for example, pitch our parking lot to runoff into the grass. It's not allowed in the W R P D. It's just not allowed. You have to treat your stormwater before you discharge to the environment. I, again, Bruce, I didn't mean to jump in it. If you, if you think I said it wrong, tell me.
No, no, that that that's um, that's pretty much what I was, I was going to mention the the stormwater regulations within the W R P D. And then I was also looking at, um, I was just looking at our our regulations for fuel dispensing stations. And one of the requirements is um containment, it's called, it's called concrete, oh, and it's it states on concrete pads at fuel dispensing stations. Must have containment grooves that can trap and facilitate the recovery on spilled gasoline or other hazardous materials. And these grooves must be covered by the canopy. Um, obviously, that's that's more for a liquid type gas at a fuel to spin. On dispensing station, but. It it, I guess it would it would apply to that too. So there'd be containment groups along with the stormwater regulations within the W R P D.
Anything else, Mike?
No, I guess that's it, but I just, uh, Bruce said, did I hear you right? That there would be a, some sort of a canopy over this parking area?
Well, that gets into the site plan.
Yeah, no, I realize, but I'm just wondering what, what I would expect. No, I'm not talking about a site plan. I'm not even thinking about a site plan right now, trying not to. Just how our regulations would interpret uh parking of vehicles in this area. That's all. Thank you.
Sure, and from what I just read, it would be, a canopy would be required for fuel dispensing stations, which is. Already proposed with this application or text.
All right, all right, thank you. I just want to get a picture in my head of what this would look like. Thank you. That's all.
Can I make a point of clarification? This is Diane Glomboski. Um, we did with the last zone of text amendment. The fuel dispensing stations from the W R P D. So they are not allowed in the W R P D as of um.
Nine fifteen.
Ten fifteen.
Or ten fifteen.
I mean, eight fifteen, sorry, when they take effect. So those regulations, you you took the um fuel dispensing stations out of the W R P D.
So they're only allowed for five more days.
Hmm.
So.
Thank you, Diane, for clarifying that.
Okay.
But again, that's not something that we're in front of you for.
Anything else, Mike?
That's all.
Okay, Hal.
Um, I really don't have too much concern about this. I think most of the concern that was raised for. Um, dispensing mostly, but even for storage was because of spills and we're talking about propane. And a spill is not, is not an issue. You can breathe the spill. I mean, you can breathe it, but it's just disperses. It has nothing to do with groundwater. So secondarily, it then comes into play as to what could the trucks do? Now, these trucks are largely fueled with propane. Then the fuel that they carry uh just to to run them is not, it's not an issue. So all that's left is kind of very small quantity, the quantities of transmission fluid. I suppose that would be the only thing. Um, I do wonder, I'm not sure of the feasibility of it, is that I didn't even, it didn't even occur to me that. Propane trucks would use propane to, as their propellant is the, what they'd be burning. Which means they're not carrying any other toxic fuels except for the oil in their transmissions. And as has been mentioned, it's a transitional thing and uh. Electricity seems to be going the way as part of the transition to electricity, as I understand, if you can make it that way. Um, I just wonder if, if there's still any concern about just having that many trucks there. I don't think we do, and if we have a general avoidance of having a whole lot of trucks for transmission fluid. Um, and fuel, just even though they're not filling up with, with um diesel fuel, but a couple of them. Well, because you have some, the applicant has some old trucks that they still use and they continue will because. Diesel trucks go for a couple of million miles. They're, they're pretty amazing, so. Do we want to throw into something here just to limit the total number of diesel trucks that can be allowed on site? In favor of trucks powered by other means, that would be propane or electricity. I just don't want to. That it can't be diesel or or all we're avoiding is diesel and gas, gasoline. So to say, oh, a maximum of. Three trucks can be diesel or gasoline and the rest need to be something else. I wouldn't want to specify what that something else was, because the technology will change. That might take almost all of the fears of what might land in our W R P away. And you can catch it, you can filter it, you can do things, but a lot of what we're doing is why we took it out in the first place is because. Bad things happen and you're relying on your technology to take care of it and. If you just to avoid doing avoidance, in this case, the applicant is already on the road to that with using mostly. Propane-powered trucks, then uh we can take that fear out too.
Can I respond to that?
Go ahead.
Uh, I I agree with you, Commissioner Zad, you know, a hundred percent, but you. The each of one of these delivery trucks is a huge investment and and I think Mr. Gable already gave testimony that. Um, the purchase of the first six trucks, um, so basically fifteen percent of the fleet is propane. Required assistance from the state government in terms of a grant. And and so the intent of the company is going to convert this entire fleet over to propane. But that's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to happen in year one. So um, you know. We thought, talking with staff, that ten was a very reasonable number. That would allow us the time to have some legacy trucks at this site while we're we're doing this conversion over. Um, you know, if if ten's not the number that that works for you. Um, you know, we may be able to adjust it slightly if you make a differentiation between propane and oil. Uh, but I, I gotta tell you, um, you know, something like you're only allowed three diesel delivery trucks will kill this project. We just can't do that. We, we have only six trucks in the entire fleet over the entire state of Connecticut. We can't move them all to Groton. So, uh, when I, I guess what I'm asking is, is some reasonableness to, to that, um, to that, um, to allow for these legacy trucks to be converted over. And again, you know, that's gonna take time. It's not gonna happen overnight. I said, you know, it could take a decade for us to do that conversion. So, uh, again, I, I'm open to that, but it has to be some reason, some reasonableness, because there will be legacy trucks absolutely at this facility. Uh, we thought, we thought ten, considering that fuel dealers with storage have no limit on the number of trucks right now, we, we agreed to a, an imposition of ten as a sort of a compromise position. Um, and that, we thought that was very reasonable for us in our situation.
Off, offhand, I, I think it sounds fairly reasonable. This thing, we can, maybe we can do better, just kind of throwing that out there. In fact, the number I came up with it saying three, or maybe, maybe the number is five, that you thought you were starting with only three to five trucks.
Right.
Then there could be a hundred percent diesel. And which would mean if you got up to five and a new truck would have to be propane in that case.
Yeah. I think in reality, we're gonna need to be successful. Um, while we start, might start with three or four or five, you know, you're gonna need a minimum of six trucks to be successful at this business. And again, we, we hope we're very successful and we have ten trucks. So I mean, if you wanted, for instance, to reduce it to eight, I think we could probably live with that. I'd have to just check with my client on cell phone, um, if you wanted to do that. But if you go much below that, that's gonna put us in a real bind and over the next couple of years in particular. And again, I would point out that by giving this text amendment, you're not actually making any decision whatsoever on the facility. So there's an opportunity for us to show you what our stormwater design is. If the concern is a leaky transmission, you know, uh, fluid, or, you know, a, a transmission case that's leaking, let us show you how we're gonna prevent that from getting into any kind of environmental situation. We, I think we have this, that obligation under section two B of the regulation to show you that we have to do suitable treatment. If we're not providing it, we don't get our site plan. I mean, that's, it's as simple as that. But I'd like the opportunity to be able to put that design together and still be able to have, uh, you know, a number of trucks um, that make this project worthwhile. I mean, we're talking about millions of dollars of investment in this facility.
Hey, I'd like to hear what some of the other commissioners. I'm, I'm fine with some other number that's anywhere between three and, and eight or something like that. I'm fine with something like that, but I, I can see the encouragement to keep pushing towards it rather than, I always look at the, suddenly we're all going and this conversation goes on with people who aren't us and including the applicant, and he doesn't care about it. They just got a whole bunch of cheap diesel trucks and now he wants to put ten or twelve or fourteen. He comes back and said, look, they were fine before. We wanna get on the record that we didn't think they were fine. It would be nice to get rid of them. So, I mean, maybe you should have a conversation, see what a good number is that isn't ten and will be somewhere in between. That's all I have.
Susan?
Yeah, thank you. I guess further to what, um, some of these Michael was saying. And, um, I guess what I would, what I would wonder how it's gonna work is, um, what the maximum storage facility, you know, how big can it be? How tall can it be? How wide? How long? I mean, what sort of, um, thing will we be looking at here? And, um, I know it sounds probably a little out there, but we usually have design standards uh, when we think about various districts and everything. And I'd be curious to hear from staff what their thoughts are in this case, when in some ways it's a simple change or addition or amendment. And yet, when we talk about other fuel type things, gas stations, the storage, of course, is on the ground. It's not a concern. Here it's going to be above ground, plus you're gonna have the trucks and everything. And, um, I would just like to get some feedback on that.
Sure. So in terms of the, the size of the building and, um, the height, so, so that would, that would all be regulated by, by the zoning district. So all the dimensional regulations would still apply.
No, I understand that, Bruce, but how big could the storage tank be? You know, I guess, since I'm from Southern California, I've seen some really big storage tanks, um, like right next to the residential. But, um, what could it possibly, what's the worst case, understanding this particular parcels? I think two point three eight acres, but what's worst case or whatever maximum case that a storage tank can look like? They're gonna be thirty feet tall? Could it be sixty feet wide?
I'm not sure without looking through all the zoning regulations, what the height would be allowed for a storage container. Um, I can't say that it would be limited to, um, certainly coverage. It would be limited to the height regulations. It could not be taller than that building. Um, I, I, I would further add that, you know, this is already allowed in, in the, in the CR zone. So I mean, it's, it's, it wouldn't be something that's not permitted within the underlying zoning district. It's the overlay is what's permitted.
Yeah. I can tell you, I can tell you also what we intend. I just got some numbers. It might help Susan, you know.
No, I really, I appreciate what you're saying, but this is just a theoretical asking. What worst case somebody comes in, because this isn't just about, uh, what will be hopefully your application. But it's really, it's a question about what could it look like in the zone? And I don't feel that we've really thought this out. Um, completely.
We're not, yeah, but all we're doing is addressing. Can you put it in the WRPD?
Correct.
I under- yeah, I understand that, but I, I might feel differently if I thought it could be a thirty-five foot.
No, I mean, it shouldn't make any difference. If it's not, we're not saying you can, we're putting a propane place somewhere else. I mean, well, anywhere in town, you could put it outside there. What's the difference? All we're saying is the WRPD.
Remember also that.
It kind of, it kind of doesn't matter if it is in the WRPD. As far as this goes, it's more like, how do we really approach, well, I mean, what's this supposed to look like? Are we saying, oh, it's industrial? We don't care. You can have ten trucks. You can have huge tanks. That's fine. So I'm just wondering if we got to the step of, oh, you need a tree that's at least twenty-five feet tall to cover the site and everything, or fencing, you know?
We have that in the regulation.
Yeah, but I don't know how it's gonna affect this particular site either.
The application is not for a specific site, but.
I'm not, I'm not saying it is, but this is the only one, uh, we have to look at. So I'm just curious.
If you look at the regulation though, it requires that any tanks onsite have to be screened from public view. And so, for example, uh, at the facility that we're envisioning, we're likely to have two thirty thousand gallon tanks. Those tanks are only fifteen feet high. So the building itself will block it. You won't be able to see it from the road. And if it doesn't block it, we'll have to screen it. That's the requirement. We have to screen it from public view. That's one of the conditions that your staff suggested for this requirement. Um, so, you know, the issue of what these tanks would look like, I agree with Chairman Prichard, that's an issue with, in the CR zoning. Um, but what we've put in, if we do it at this site, we have to screen it from public view. That's a requirement of fuel dealers in the WRPD. So I think that ameliorates the concern that you're raising about appearance, which I think is a fair concern. Uh, if you wanna look at just fuel tanks in general across town, then I think there may be one, make changes elsewhere in other parts of your regulations. Um, a coup- just two other things, just I would throw out, because I, I got some information from my client while we were sitting here. Uh, all of the trucks used in, at least in our fleets are air brakes. Um, you know, they have air brakes. Um, and so they don't have leaking transmissions or, 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 um, uh, oil. That's just not something that these trucks are, 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 are used. That's not an issue that's significant. But still remind you that we would be providing some type of treatment for wherever they're stor- stored. And the only other comment is, and going to Mr. Zad's point, um, if you're going to cut the number of sort of um, diesel or gasoline delivery trucks down from ten, my client needs six. That's six would be the absolute minimum. And if, and if we can compromise on that tonight, Mr. Zad, if that gets us your vote, we can go down to six. If we go down below six, um, you know, we might be able to start in Groton, but we could have a really hard time if we can't get those new propane trucks online. We may not be able to build the business in Groton. And that's a concern for the amount of investment that we have to have. So six is, and he just went back, I mean, I, I was told ten was what we could live with. Well, six is absolute. If it's under six, we, we can't do the project. So I, I hope that that's a reasonable compromise. All I would ask is, if we have true propane powered, um, trucks, we can have those on site. That it's six diesel or gasoline, um, uh, vehicles. And then if we have propanes, if, if five years from now we get a huge grant, we switch all over to propane, then, you know, those don't count toward our limit.
Okay, that's very helpful. Um, just one other question though. Uh, and it was, it's useful, Attorney Sweeney, for me to hear that you're talking about fifteen foot height. On the, the, what would the rest of the dimensions be for a tank?
There'd be about forty-five feet long is, is what a thirty thousand gallon tank. And that's what's typical in the industry. Um, you know, um, so, you know, I, I think, you know, thinking forty-five feet long, uh, fifteen feet high. And again, they have to be screened. So, you know, I, I know the site and I know we're not talking about the site tonight, but I picture that you're gonna have some type of a distribution building in front. That building is gonna provide the screening. And if we have to add some additional fencing or landscaping, we'll do it. But you won't even know those tanks are there. You won't even know the trucks are there. At the end of the day, you'll just see a nice building with some fencing around it and some landscaping.
And what kind of widths would it have?
Um, Dave, do you, can you text me or just comment on what the width of that tank would be? Just, you can approximate it.
Am I on?
Yes, Dave, you're on.
Hundred, hundred and thirty-one inches in diameter, which is about eleven feet. Thanks, Dave. It's a cylinder. So the eleven foot tank sits on concrete piers that are roughly four feet high. For a total of fifteen feet.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I don't have any further questions?
Thanks, Susan.
Kevin?
I have a couple of questions. So first of all, um, I liked the, the discussion on the size of the tanks, because I think, um, when, when Michael first asked, there was an imprecise answer. There's a lot of articulate type of discussion, but it was, and, and it wasn't precise, because the question is, is this one tank or multiple? And I think we've addressed that issue, right? And I think we've addressed the issue within the zone here that allows that it's gonna be screened, it's gonna be building in front. So that, I think, hits it. My question starts, um, and I'm not bothered by the ten at all. And, and I think if, if that's what has been addressed is an imprecise number, but it's not a horrible number. Is that the number of trucks that are gonna be stored there or gonna be there at any given time? For example, is this site a wholesale site in any way whereby they intend to, you know, um, stack up the trucks and, and load other, um, trucks, um, that are maybe not associated with, with the original manufacturer, as we would call?
The, the regulation is, is simply the number is limited to trucks that are stored on the site. Dave, do you wanna answer the question of whether this is a wholesale site and would, would trucks be visiting during the day? Um, could you answer that question, Dave?
Sure. Uh, it, it's not my intent to make this a wholesale site. It would for our own operations. So there may be, we'll say, to pick a number, ten vehicles parked in the, in the lot at night and out making deliveries during the day. So, uh, and then obviously there are support, support trucks like service trucks and installation trucks that typically are taken home by the employees at night. So it would just be the fu- bulk fuel delivery trucks that would be stored on site, uh, after hours.
Okay. So we're not lining up outside on the road, you know, ten or fifteen more trucks. Just wanna make sure that. Um, my last thing is I just wanted to, um, say to the applicant, we appreciate that you've embraced the P O C D. I don't like when there's conflicts with that. And I think this application very much embraces that. And I wanted to say that's a job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I only had, uh, a couple of comments. They don't quite understand why the concern over the number of stored vehicles, other than people wanna make a stand on just reducing something, because they see a number. I mean, it, as long as the leakage is contained and doesn't, uh, go directly into the soil, I don't, I don't see what an issue is, when all we're doing is approving this, uh, operation in the WRPD, not throughout the rest of the town, just that it's not WRPD issue. The other one I had was a question, I don't know if it's really for you, Diane, on the format of this, uh, proposed amendment, using dots instead of numbers for the sub paragraphs. Is that acceptable? As I noticed when, uh, Mr. Sweeney read off his, what, his interpretation of the change would be, he numbered everything in that Bruce's, uh, amendment, or his, uh, motion rather, has everything in dots rather than in numeric paragraphs.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess Diane's there, her answer.
Um, I don't know. I would have to look and see what the, um, what the format is for the actual text. Um, Bruce, did you follow the format of?
I looked at that and it does both. Normally, if, if you just followed your Microsoft Word and letting it do its paragraph numbering for you, it would go from, from lowercase A to, uh, one with a parent after it or something like that. For the next subdivision, it wouldn't submit dots.
Come out across Microsoft, Jeff. Huh? Don't come out. You know, you know my background there.
I know. I appreciate that. It's the way you do it.
I, I, I'm responsible for the dots, Mr. Chairman, and the reason.
You ratted him off as numbers.
I did, because I don't like the dots personally.
I don't either.
I chose them to be consistent with your formatting.
That's right.
If you look, if you look up, uh, in, in, earlier in the same section in six point four nine B industrial, it, it's clear that when you, in this section of your regulations at least, when you have A, B, C, and D, if you then have subsections, those little dots are used. So I was just trying to be consistent for consistency through your, through your regulations. Um, but if you wanna change that, I, that's absolutely fine with me.
No, I prefer numbers, but I didn't wanna read something or put it in there and it would be different than what we want.
It's hard to read dots.
For the, um, for the zoning regulations.
For it is, is a specific item. It's easier to give it a number or a value.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chairman, that's one of the things that I did check for consistency here. What we do is we do number and then we do, um, lowercase letter and then below the lowercase letter, if there's additional conditions, they are dotted consistently.
Yeah, but it is that, I have, you know, it just doesn't seem right to me.
Because we wanted to limit the amount of, um, numerics and for certain items. And we got to that point and we said, okay, this is the limit. We have to go to dots now.
Okay.
So that's like it is in the rest of the regulations.
I just wanna make sure, because Mr. Sweeney read them off as in, with a numeric value.
I absolutely did that, Mr. Chairman. You caught me.
Huh?
You, I absolutely did, right. Just because it was, it was hard to say it otherwise.
No, it is. Well, the advantage is that if you ever have to refer to it in a change, it's a lot easier. Have every paragraph numbered. But, uh, does anyone still have any open questions for for this, uh, requested change?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, it hasn't been.
Oh, if, if no one has, you know, someone else.
Oh, go ahead. No.
Oh, so, okay. So my, I guess my concern is not, not so much with the propane. I, I understand the, the value of that. My concern is, and, and, uh, I guess it's, uh, that Mr. Sweeney is presenting this own change. So he has an application that he has envisioned. But we have to remember that we have to kind of put that aside and look at this regulation more for me is how, like the storage of diesel trucks or vehicles on a property in the WRPD. So if this were, if there was a, uh, a moving company and they had tractor trailers parked, how many tractor trailers would we be comfortable having stored on any site? And put the propane out of your mind. And that, that's.
And that's why I think that it's important to limit the number of of trucks that are because you could get a tractor trailer that could have a hundred gallons of diesel fuel. On the vehicle itself. Besides all the other fluids. So I I think that there should be and and not. And this is nothing to do with the propane or Mr. Sweeney's application. This is because we could, we're changing the whole our W R P D. In that any other operation running in the W R P D would say, look, you're allowing ten. Delivery trucks with diesel fuel. Uh, we should also be allowed. An equal number of trucks. It could be, you know, any other business that's allowed in the W R P D. Then would feel comfortable to allow parking and storage for that number of vehicles. That's why I would be more inclined to limit the number of diesel or gasoline powered vehicles in the W R P D. And and without regard for Mr. Sweeney's application or without regard for propane. That's all.
I agree with that. That's logical.
So that's my concern is the diesel and the gasoline trucks. Uh, if if this applicant were to come to us and said that he had. Fifteen vehicles and they were all propane, I would probably be inclined to say that's not such a terrible thing, but. But if they were, but I think that we need to look at this as the entire W R P D. And how many diesel or gasoline vehicles are we comfortable allowing for any business? You know, it might be the Granite Group. And they wouldn't have propane powered vehicles or some other operation. So that's just keep that in the back of my mind. And I just encourage everyone to think about that as well.
Well, Michael, do you think that ten is a good number for diesel numbered trucks?
I I guess it would depend on how big they were.
They'd be big.
Yeah, and and then what are they?
We're not going to get into the size of the tractor or the size of the tanks. We're going to say the number of trucks. So. How many diesel trucks would there be? That's kind of why I kind of threw out with your thoughts in mind. I kind of threw out a number and maybe the number is, as Mr. Sweeney says, maybe maybe it's seven.
I I think that we're making a zoning regulation change. And I understand that Mr. Sweeney is presenting this and he's the presenter, but I really cannot. Allow myself to consider that application that might or might not occur when I'm thinking about this other issue, which is now storage of diesel fuel. Fired vehicles in the W R P D. But remember that the text amendment, and I hear what you're saying, Mr. Kane. The text amendment doesn't influence anything other than fuel dealers. So the rule that you elected to adopt here. Will only be applicable to fuel dealers. It won't apply to the Granite Group or the other users. Now, you could go and take action as a commission. To change the general rule for diesel trucks in the zone, but. Tonight, I think you're going to be limited to making a decision only in terms of. Delivery trucks for propane. That's that's all that's in front of you tonight. That's the scope of what's in front of you. Now. As I said before, if if I think, you know, I believe that the compromise that we reached with staff of ten is reasonable. I think that allows for flexibility and growth. If that, if the majority of the board feels that it should be less than that, we can live with that. But if you go below si- if you go below six. Um, that's going to hurt us. And and I know that you're you're right. You have to look at the bigger picture, but I would suggest. It's not going to be just us. It's going to be anybody who's doing what we're doing in this zone, and that's propane dealing. Um, that would be a major obstacle, particularly in the short term until propane vehicles become more commonplace. Ten fifteen years from now, maybe having it down to three, I think, as Mr. Zod suggested might work. But, you know, if we're okay, if you want to reduce it to six as a compromise, but it's only about propane dealer. Uh, delivery vehicles tonight because that's the only thing that's been presented in the regulation. That's where I have a problem because it 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 opens up this. Pandora's box for other businesses to then come to us and say, look, you allow it for this business. Even though it's propane, if if we're allowing diesel vehicles to be stored in the W R P D. That's what I that's what I'm looking at here. And and not nothing to do with the propane. Well, and you might want to take up, you might want to take this issue up in a more global sense. Um, you know, i- if if you feel that's appropriate at a separate date through a separate process, but I can tell you that my client, you know, is willing to compromise even further if need be. You know, and 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 so if you wanted to, if you felt it was necessary to reduce it from ten, I still am advocating for ten. But if you want to reduce it, we're willing to compromise with you in in to six gasoline or diesel trucks. And then we can have, if we have propane trucks, then that limit doesn't apply. It's only for 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 gas and diesel. And hopefully will be converted over eventually, and and so will all of our competitors. It won't be an issue, but I think you have to do it. You have to be reasonable in the short term. And I don't think six trucks, you know, on a on a commercial site, these are all commercially or industrially zone properties. I don't think that's a lot of truck. I I just don't think that that that's the case. If I was asking for thirty or forty trucks, different story. I I completely agree with you. I just don't think six trucks are are going to be meaningful, particularly when we have to come back to you. And show you stormwater controls for that area.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Bruce, can you, do we have any restrictions right now on the W R P D on storage of trucks?
Well, as I as I mentioned, so I mean, the use of storage in commercial storage of vehicles like that is generally. Highly regulated or prohibited within W R P D. So this would be somewhat unusual. I can't say for each use. I mean, we'd look at it individually if if it's completely regulated, but. Uses that are generally so associated with the storage of vehicles are are regulated. You know, this is something that if it weren't storing propane, I would recommend that all vehicles be stored indoors. Because there's going to be propane storage within these delivery trucks that they can't be stored indoors. So I I do recommend that. So that's. That's why I I further wanted to limit it to the ten vehicles. And I thought I thought that was reasonable. And I I further limited to the impervious surfaces only. So, you know, it it wouldn't be, if if there was a leak, it it wouldn't be into the into the pervious soils or into the gravel. Also because the impervious coverage of the site, which can be no more than seventy percent, it would be further limited to that. So when you. When you, when you take the the restriction of how much the site can be impervious, the building coverage, the twenty percent area of the site that needs to be vegetated. Um, if there are any wetlands, there's going to be an up near the area and further restrictions. It it's really starting to limit the usable area of the site. But I I really thought ten with the impervious surface would be compromised, but um. Yeah, I I will say the storage of commercial vehicles like that, it's it's um. It it would be a bit different from what we do generally in the W R P D. And that's that's why I had those concerns and I I suggested those.
But you do allow, you do allow motor vehicle repair, don't you, in the W R P D?
We do. We do allow that indoors. And so also for new dealers and used dealers, we don't allow used dealers, but we allow new car dealers. But fifty percent of the stock, either new certified.
Maybe we should just go with six instead of ten.
That would be six diesel diesel.
Yes, six. It doesn't make any difference while you're just thinking of the diesel fuel. Of the fuel.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly would like it to, if we have a propane vehicle. We don't see any reason why we shouldn't be allowed to have that on site because that would allow us to get to the ten. If you limited it to six diesel and gasoline delivery trucks. Then we could still, we think at full full operations, if we're we're killing it, we're doing a great job. We're we're being really successful. We're going to have ten trucks stored there overnight. Four of them then then can be propane.
There are propane. If this were electric, we wouldn't be, if you're if this, if we're talking electric, we wouldn't even be talking about this.
Exactly, exactly. So we shouldn't be regulated by that. We should be, you should be encouraging that. That should be, that should be something for us, you know, something to strive towards. So again, I I think I've made myself clear. You know, if you want to reduce the number. Down to six diesel or gasoline, we can live with that. Anything less than that will severely compromise our position. Um, so we would ask you to, you know, to adopt the regulations with the staff modifications. And if you want to make this additional modification, we're we're amenable to that. The only other two things I would say is if you do choose to approve it, make sure that you set an effective date for the regulation in your motion. Um, and then finally, if you close the public hearing, please make sure that you don't enter any evidence that hasn't already been put into the record. And I know Mr. Zod laughing, just obviously just make sure that we preserve the the sanctity of the record. And I do appreciate your time tonight. Um, at the end of the day, you know, Mr. Gable's family company wants to invest in the town of Groton. And I think he's the kind of of fuel dealer that I think we want and we need in this society right now. Be nice if he could, he could do a project in this community at a site that his company has. Uh, we hope that, you know, that you can find some kind of compromise that works for you and addresses the concerns across the board of general applicability. But also allows, you know, Mr. Gable to be successful and to grow his business, you know, in the years to come. So thank you again for your time tonight.
Well said. I agree. Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time.
Does anyone on the commission have any other issues to to raise? Because if we close the public hearing, then that's the end of end of input. We need any other information? Staff have any concerns if we close the public hearing?
No, I do. I I did see a hand or two raised after. I don't know if you wanted to ask for maybe comment one more time before we close, but. No, I'm not. I'm not sure if they actually wanted to speak on this.
You mean a public? Does anyone? Does anyone on the public have hands raised?
Uh, no, no, they don't. There was one raised before, but it's been.
Thought that was me.
No, it's my answering machine. I don't know how to turn it off. I just let it go. It's probably one of those somebody trying to.
Is your car worn? Do you run it out?
Better not. One's either no or one's thirty years old, so.
Well, the thirty year old one has worn out.
Huh?
The thirty year old one has run out.
Actually, that that one turned out to be more reliable than my my other car before I kept the moon. So if we have no other, no other questions, concerns that we haven't addressed. No one on the commission has anything, then I'll make a motion then to close the public hearing. For the zoning regulation amendment, R E G A twenty-one oh two. Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth and second. Any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Hearing on will vote on the on the motion to close the the hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next public hearing we have is S P E C number three seventy-four. Days in conversion, multi-family. Would you want to read the? Legal ad hell?
Yeah. Says notices hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on August tenth, twenty twenty-one at seven. P M virtually via Zoom platform to hear the following special permit number three seven four one thirty-five Gold Star Highway. Pin one six eight nine one two eight five one two five five C R zone. Proposal is to convert the existing building from hotel motel use to multi-family residential use. Review is per section. Review is per. Section five point one dash eight point H multi-unit dwellings, conversion of the zoning regulations. Jonathan Corndian, Blue Rock Property Group LLC applicant, Sat Purish Hospitality LLC owner. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town website calendar or can be attended by visiting W W W dot zoom dot U S. Webinar ID eight seven four four one four eight four one six nine password two one zero six eight two or by phone. One three oh one. Seven one five eight five nine two. Access to electronic equipment at the town hall acts for the purposes of attending or participating in the meeting. Shall be provided to any member of the public who proves. Who provides a written request to the office of planning and development not less than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the planning department. One three four Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, dated this thirtieth day of July, twenty twenty-one at Groton, Connecticut.
Hey. Thank you, Hal. Now, staff has made a comment. Over. Lack of information provided with the applicants. Application. I don't know if the applicant want to speak to us tonight, Bruce.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the the applicant has requested that. This application be opened and continued. Um. It if they are here, I think they they may have to speak about when what date it is continued to. So I'm not sure if Sergio is there. Like speak on that.
Well, if we continue, it would be to our September. Meeting, which is September fourteenth. And the applicant. Wishes to make a statement or. I mean, you can make a presentation tonight, but then it will have to be repeated again. That's.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that a presentation be made tonight.
Does the applicant, is the applicant online?
Uh, yeah, he looks like he is muted right now. I'm not sure if he has, if he'd like to.
If you have to promote him or if he has anything.
I promoted him. He just may not have anything to say.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm in a loud loud place. Uh, my client, John Corndian, is trying to get into the meeting.
Could you introduce yourself, please, for the record?
Sure. This is Sergio Terenzia. With Terenzia and Associates, offices located at ninety-nine Mechanic Street, Parktuck, Connecticut. Um, I'm the engineer for the applicant. Uh, my client, John Corndian, is trying to log into the meeting. He, um. But his request tonight was to see if the commission would entertain a special meeting before the end of August. Don't know if that's something that you can accommodate or not.
Well, based on what's the rationale?
Simply, there was a miscommunication on the requirement for the building plan, which has been submitted. Um, I believe it would give ample time for. Uh, the planner to review those plans. Everything else, I believe, in the package has been satisfied. Uh, with respect to the site plan and and primary requirements. Um, and the the project architect had some hardship in trying to get those plans in in a timely manner. Going to be a being abroad and he couldn't accommodate because of some issues with some thefts while he was abroad. Um, so we just started looking to see if it was something that the commission might entertain.
Well, I don't know what what the feelings would be to. Have another meeting. Why can't, why can't he wait till the next regular meeting?
Um, he'd have to answer that himself. I'm trying to get him onto the meeting if he's available. I'll see if I can. Uh, getting him into it. If you can just wait just one minute, I could see what his issue is. He's trying to get.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm here. I apologize.
Thanks, John.
Jonathan, you want to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
You want to introduce yourself?
Sure, yes. My name is Jonathan Corndian. Um, I am hopefully, I'm going to be. Sure, yes. My name is Jonathan Corndian. Um, I am hopefully, I'm gonna be. Be uh converting one thirty five Gold Star Highway, which is uh currently a hotel right now to a multi-family residence. Live in Great Neck, New York. Um, that's pretty much it.
Did, do you have any problem with continuing this hearing till our next regular meeting on September fourteenth?
I do. Um, I've uh unfortunately with um Mark's current situation um. With his passport um being stolen, um, we've had some setbacks. Which uh, we've already had one um because of it, which has cost me a significant amount of money to. Delay the contract and I. We really need to be on the agenda tonight, but we understand because of his setback. I mean, we had some minor. Documents that weren't submitted in time that could be reviewed. Um, and now I'm faced up against. Another extension fee, which is upwards of twenty thousand dollars for the second time to postpone this uh. This contract. Um, so i- it is becoming a financial issue. So it. If it is possible for everyone to meet at the end of uh August would be very helpful because it's the second time I'm kind of going through this.
Well, could, could we, is that a legitimate reason to hold a special meeting, Deb, or? I guess we can do it, but.
Yeah, this is, this is really your call. If, if you're available and if you want to entertain.
Is there a meeting room available, say, in two weeks or one week?
Well, there'd be a Zoom account that would be available. Um, uh, actually, the, the real question is to Bruce, will you have enough time to review this and and have it ready for the commission to look at?
Well, it's just not his, doesn't have to go out to other people in the town to look at it too, right?
Yeah, exactly. So Bruce, what do you think?
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that was the reason why I can't, I, I wouldn't recommend it being heard or certainly not decided on tonight. Um, two weeks from now. Yeah, sufficient time for other agencies to review the application and for staff to review as well. But uh, i- if you, if you read my recommendation, you know, I was recommending it be continued to the regular meeting in September. It's, it's entirely up to the commission whether or not they want to accommodate their request, but I wouldn't recommend anything sooner than August twenty. Staff to do review, but again, it's really up to the commission on the applicant just requested that they could pitch this idea today. Uh, yeah, for you.
And to move it to the.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't sort of wait till September, but that's me. Sorry. I don't mean to be selfish, but that's uh.
Well, if it's just one item, but I don't know if we have any other issues that are pending.
Right. But we have a process that needs to be cleared through our town of Groton staff. And then it appears at the meeting, whether it's a minor issue or a major issue, it's not complete. Let's move it to September's meeting.
That's what my feeling is.
That's what, that's how we work, right?
They were delinquent in getting it to us. We could have returned the, the thing is not a, is denied because it wasn't complete.
Right. We're sensitive to it, but you know, you know, the fact is, we have a process and the process is that we move it to September. That's the process.
And we treat everyone like that.
Mm-hmm. No, that's true.
Unless there's something that's.
Unless there's something unusual. I mean, we could have refused, just denied the application.
Right. So I haven't heard anything unusual.
No.
Well, let's, let's, let's leave that argument alone. It's, it's unusual, but not that unusual to have. Paul held right loose, so it's, it's kind of true.
Now, and I also don't want to start having special meetings for everybody who doesn't. Complete their application in time, because we'll be having special meetings all the time. Sorry. And, and when we have to start going to uh, you know, when we're not online, Mr. Chairman, you will have to report to the. The town hall and guys, it won't be Zoom anymore.
Yeah. Well, we're also going to back to two meetings a month too and starting in September. And the reason is, it's difficult at this time of year to get people. To attend. So the feeling is that we do not want to have a special meeting for this application. Is what I'm hearing.
That would be my inclination.
That's correct.
Mind if it in fact makes the following meeting easier. It all comes down to the other.
Hmm. Well, it would make it lighten the load a little, but I don't know how much would be on the, the agenda. We don't have any other pressing issues that are coming up, do we, Deb?
Um, I, you know, I don't have a feel for what.
No, but I mean, we don't have any known.
Hmm. No, I, I mean, there could be some other site plans on that applicant, on that uh meeting agenda in September.
Yeah, but I meant we don't have any major.
No.
Issues. So maybe we should not hold a special meeting. That's what the consensus is. Hmm? Just from what I hearing.
The only way I'd, I'd be in favor of the special meeting if, if is, if it in fact avoided a three hour meeting in two weeks, hence.
Well, it would shorten, it would shorten it.
Shorten, right. So it's, that's not my only concern, like, like this one is going. So it'd be nice to not have consecutive three hour meetings.
Right.
For sitting here in Zoom, it could be a one hour meeting.
Hmm. Yeah, Zoom meetings can go quick. It would be the only item on the agenda. Which is a plus. Does anybody ever else have any thoughts or? Because it would reduce our time in September. Hmm?
Maybe.
Hmm, maybe.
It would.
Hmm?
Oh.
So.
I mean, from, from, I apologize to cut in here, but from, I mean, I don't like being on nine o'clock Zooms, but I mean, if you guys are okay with uh. Another nine o'clock Zoom, September fourteenth, I mean, I'm okay with it also, but um, I think it is a big development.
Mm-hmm.
But uh, ultimately up to you guys.
Oh. I, it sounds like more people want to do the fourteenth, go to September. Uh, since, since it is sometimes difficult to get a quorum at this time of year. That's why we only meet once, once a month. So I'll make a motion then to uh continue this. Public hearing until the meeting of September fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing non will vote on the motion to continue the hearing to September fourteenth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of uh minutes. We have the. Meeting of July thirteenth. I'll make a motion to approve the minute of uh. Our July thirteenth, twenty twenty one meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in seconded. Is there any, anybody have any corrections on the, on the minutes?
I had a few, a few uh corrections or additions, I guess. In the commission report on page seven. Uh. Could we put something to where, where it says Tarbox addressed the pictures of the standard from the front of the Mystic Times? Uh, just somewhere in there, could we reference Three Water Street? Because I believe that's what she was talking about.
Yes.
And uh, just what the standard is so that someone's reading that doesn't wonder what the standard is.
Oh, the bill.
I mean, I know what it is. I was at the last.
Yeah, but five years from now, nobody will know.
No, no one's gonna know. And then it doesn't say that it, that she was referencing Three Water Street.
Yeah, but I think just adding the two, adding three waters.
Make it, make it clear. Add Three Water Street and then just either.
Standard at Three Water.
Yeah, say what the standard is or, you know, what that is.
Say the standard of three water, or the building standard it.
Well, the standard, I believe, was the building that it was uh designed, that was initially designed, was a postcard of this building. Then, then they used the postcard and it was called the standard. I thought that's what it was, but see, we don't even know now, Jeff.
Or just say the building, the, the building, uh.
And then uh, the other thing is, is the report of staff. It says the commission agreed that they would like to discuss the screening with the contractor. And I specifically had asked that we, I would like to see the video that they presented to us initially as to what it was supposed to look like. And then, and then a video of what it actually does look like today. So I, besides us just having a conversation, I want to see that video again, and I would like to see a new video that shows what is there. That's it.
Does anyone have anything else? Or corrections?
Just with that previous item about the pictures of the standard, you should probably get rid of it just because even in my, the next paragraph, the next mention just calls it Three Water Street. So, shouldn't be saying the standard. We should be saying Three Waters Street.
Three Waters, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, because it's not the standard, right?
It's, building name is the standard, but.
Yeah, okay.
Standard was.
Yeah, all right. That makes it clearer.
Yep, okay. Oops, okay, I see. I jumped over, all right. Actually, I jumped ahead of us, but okay. So I don't know why my pages got mixed up. Does anyone have any other corrections? If not, then I'll vote on the uh motion to approve the uh July meeting of maybe minutes of July thirteenth. Uh, meeting as amended. All those in favors say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Yeah, I got screwed up here again on my, I tried to get too, I got too organized tonight. And uh, we're supposed to have gone to consideration of public hearings. The first one uh was spec three seventy three Rogers. Development uh. Let's see. Does anyone have any uh, any concerns with the, for the special permit? For Rogers uh development? Because I'll make a motion then to approve special more permit three seventy, number three seventy three Rogers Development, eleven fifty four Paconic Road. To convert the existing building from commercial use to a five unit multi-family residential use. Subject to the following modifications. One, that the onsite parking shall be reduced to comply with section eight point two of the zoning regulations. The site plan shall be revised to incorporate this revision prior to the recording of the special permit. Two, that the walking path and benches as depicted on the quote recreation community space concept plan. End of quote shall be shown on a revised site plan. Three, that the air conditioning condensers on the western side of the existing building shall be screened to comply. With standards of section eight point one dash seven point B. The site plan shall be revised to incorporate this revision prior to re- recording of the special permit. Four, technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings and reasons for approval. The commission finds that this application complies with section five point one dash eight H. Multiple unit dwellings conversion of the zoning regulations. The commission also finds that this application complies with the special permit criteria in section nine point four dash six of the zoning regulations. And does not alter the essential characteristics of the area, does not cause traffic congestion or safety conflicts. And does not conflict with the purposes of these regulations. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Does anyone have any discussion on the, on the motion to approve the special permit? Hearing non will vote on the, on the motion for special proving special permit three seventy three. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is cares, is carried. Next item is propane or. R E G A twenty one oh two propane fuel text amendment W R P D. Uh, for purposes of uh discussion.
I don't see that on the agenda.
Item three, consideration of public hearings. Yeah, public hearings, consideration of public hearings. And then approval of minutes. I got the approval of minutes out of order.
Okay.
Hmm.
Okay.
So they, so they're supposed to take precedence. So just for purposes of discussion, I'm going to make the motion. Uh, and then we can amend that if people feel that it. Should be amended. So I'll make a motion to approve zoning regulation text amendment of application. R E G A twenty one dash oh two two one, amend section four point one. Quote table of permitted uses and the quote to permit. Fuel dealers with stor- storage in the water resource protection district. W R P D subject to the, to additional conditions or restrictions under the W R P D. Two, to amend section six point four dash nine D point two parent fuel dealer and the parent to read as follows. Two, fuel dealer A, all fuel dealers are prohibited with the exception of those that meet the definition of quote. Fuel dealer without storage and quote, or those that meet the definition of quote. Fuel dealer with storage quote, and that are further limited to propane fuel storage only. Fuel dealers with propane storage shall also comply with the following. Uh, gasoline or diesel fuel storage shall not be allowed on the site. Fuel types other than propane shall be not, shall not be stored onsite. Next item, all vehicles, all vehicle maintenance shall take place in an enclosed, enclosed building or offsite. Any fuel dealer that also includes vehicle service and repair. Minor must follow the conditions for that use in addition to these conditions. Next item, vehicle washing shall not be allowed on a site. Next sub item, propane storage tank shall not be placed in the front yard. And must be screened from the public view per section eight point one dash seven B parent five. Next item, the number of fuel delivery trucks stored onsite shall be limited to no more than ten. The storage of these trucks shall be located on an impervious surface and comply with all other requirements of section six point four. on an impervious surface and comply with all other requirements of section six point four. B all stormwater runoff must be treated per section six dash four point six point D point one before any overland flow over previous surfaces. Town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission hereby modifies and adopts zoning regulation text amendment pursuant to the following findings and reasons for approval. One, this amendment is consistent with the town's twenty sixteen Plan of Conservation and Development parent P O C D and the parent with the with particular regard to goals, objectives, and reckon mandations for updating the Water Resource Protection District. Parent W R P D and parent section six point four of the zoning regulations to conserve important natural resources and to encourage sustainable economic development. Two, the zoning text amendment is made in accordance with a comprehensive plan for the town of Groton and provides for reasonable consideration of the environment and Long Island sound in accordance with the provisions of C G S eight dash two. The text amendment shall become effective September fifteen, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second cuz there are any discussion on this motion?
I I I have an issue with that last bullet. The number of fuel delivery trucks stored on the site onsite shall be limited to the no more than ten. The storage of these trucks shall be located in an impervious surface and comply with all other requirements of section six point four. So as I said previously, and I will repeat myself, I suppose here. I I don't have an issue with the whole rest of the regulation. It's just these. I believe I believe that this is opening up an opportunity to now where, as Bruce told us, the storage of these kinds of vehicles in the W R P D is now highly regulated and not not allowed, that now we are allowing up to ten potentially diesel vehicles regardless of their size or gasoline vehicles regardless their size for any purpose. And and I would I would suggest that any business would be able to use this as as a way to then change that regulation that now prohibits that kind of storage in the W R P D. And for that reason, I I would be opposed to this. If those vehicles were limited to also being propane, I would be comfortable with it. That's how I feel. I don't want to open up that opportunity. For me. And and without regard to Mr. Sweeney's application, I'm trying to not think of that. Because I believe that he is proposing an important opportunity for Groton. Just how it's being distributed.
Well, the trucks are because they can't be stored inside. That's
Yeah, no, I realize.
Somehow inserted into this to make it obvious that the.
Should it just actually say that? That since since propane trucks cannot be stored inside as is further as is typically limited. Therefore, so just kind of put the reasoning behind this being specific to propane trucks.
Right. Maybe stored outside, limited to no more than ten or something like that. Would that make sense to you, Mike, or?
I guess it's a.
Well, it would explain why it's really an exception to the to to the rule of requiring inside. Then it still requires you shall be located on impervious service and cap and comply with all other requirements of six point four, which would mean that you'd have to have enough containment outside to prevent overflow or leakage outside of the impervious surface area.
So so we're we're we just want to change the verbiage so that it makes it clear that this is specifically.
Because they're propane.
Give it give a rationale for it.
Right.
Okay, that's I guess that's I mean, I haven't heard anyone else make any comments, but I guess that's more reasonable. Also, that number ten, I would like to see that number reduced. I I kind of liked it when the house, in fact, I was sort of, I I'm sometimes not willing to to be so bold as Hal was with three, but I I kind of liked it when he said three. I don't know if other people want to weigh in on a number, but I think ten is probably too many.
Well, we heard six, so maybe that's.
Well, that was just because of that applicant and I yeah, but I don't know the any reasons that we have for another number, you know?
Right. It's an imprecise number, right? What what's the template and quantitative measurement? We don't have one, right? It's just a number that we feel is a workable number. This particular applicant gave us six, right? The max was ten. If we want to go in between at eight seems more reasonable than ten. And that's another imprecise, you know, statement. So.
Yeah, I think it's just a number that's at this point, and I I understand, Kevin. It's it's like we're pulling numbers out of the hat.
Right. Both, even the ten number and.
Yeah, no, or three. Yeah, yeah. And I think Hal really did pull that out.
We'll say hat, Hal.
Thank you. But except the only kind of information that we have that was presented, in fact, was there is a workable business that's out there. And we think that six is the logical number for the bottom, which is the only information we have. So I I'd have to say at this point, based on the information that we have for this to be a workable number, all we've got is six. As far as diesel trucks. Which would encourage therefore any enlargement of the business, it would encourage it to start to go electric or propane. But still limited to strictly propane delivery trucks.
That's right.
Well, the applicant did say that they that the number of businesses, I believe I wrote four to six. And their biggest one is ten. I believe that's what I heard. And so I would suggest that four to six I would be comfortable with. And then hopefully that would encourage them to grow their business and grow it using other kinds of delivery trucks. So I'm uncomfortable with four to six, I would say.
Well, it's it's a limit, so limited to no more than we can't do a range.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm no, I'm I'm offering that to all of you. And that's where I'm comfortable, probably. Probably as much as six, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, the applicant said from a business model, six is is his minimum. We agreed up to business model. We agree to text amendment. I think we do it. We do as a minimum six. So my thought.
Good for six.
And then so long as it the the verbiage is very clear as to why we are doing this, that otherwise all vehicles should be stored indoors.
Well, I think that's what exists today, right?
Yeah, I just, you know, don't want to see this as something that becomes comes back to suggest to someone else in another kind of operation that that it's okay for them. Why is it? You know what I mean?
Right. You don't want it to be a precedent.
No.
No.
Mister Mister Chairman, I I I I I just drafted kind of like a additional condition to kind of go off that point. I was thinking that we just we could add another bullet there that says something along the lines of fuel trucks shall be stored indoors unless building code and or fire code regulations prohibit indoor storage. So that would kind of make the default of all in of all delivery trucks indoors unless the applicant at a site plant phase would provide us a regulation, building code or fire code that would stipulate that they cannot be stored indoors. And then we could fall back to ten outdoors on or six outdoors on impervious surface, if that makes sense, or that's.
All right, I just thought we could just, you know, revise it a little bit, just say maybe due to the inability for inside storage of propane trucks outside onsite storage is allowed for no more than than six trucks.
Diesel first. Six diesel trucks, diesel or gasoline trucks. That's what we're limiting.
Do we even have to say that if we just say?
We don't necessarily mind him having.
Oh, I see.
If he had electric vehicles, I wouldn't have a problem. Or if they were propane, probably it would be less of an issue. Bruce, is that where we find? Is it through the building code and the fire code that we would find that that these kinds of trucks would be prohibited from being stored here?
I believe so. Yeah, it's not in the zoning regulations that that would stipulate that, you know, propane fuel trucks can't be stored indoors, be in the building code or or fire code. Yeah, that and that's what the applicant told me before the public hearing as well.
Okay.
Yeah. And just just one point on, if you're going to just regulate the storage of diesel trucks, just I just want to consider if you if you open it up or you know, unlimited amount of propane fuel delivery trucks. I mean, I don't know. And then you kind of open it up to an unlimited. So I don't know if you want to regulate the amount of delivery trucks too, so you don't end up with, you know, forty propane fuel delivery trucks on the site. You know, six diesel trucks.
Yeah, I have other limitations as to how many trucks can be on site. Don't we find that elsewhere?
No. Yeah, but you want them all inside. We're only concerned here about outside trucks.
And 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 you have to try to use your, you know, what other ways does this would this apply to other businesses or you know, that this would be used as a launch pad.
Only because of the restrictions about inside storage.
That's it. Yeah, it's the only reason.
Right.
So I like I like Bruce's idea.
Just use Bruce's idea.
But I mean, we need to put something in there, but about if we're going to change the 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 six, we don't care how many trucks are there total. So we don't want any more than six filled with diesel fuel.
I don't. Yeah, but it you might have other concerns of, you know, being outside, things get washed washed off the trucks and stuff.
Yeah.
So that's why maybe you want it. You don't care whether they're diesel or or not.
Well, it would be washed off the trucks. I don't even quite get that.
Well, then.
Same thing. It's gonna be on the building. It's it's gonna be the same thing on the trucks. It's gonna be what's on the building. This is by the nature of the business that is propane. There's nothing in the business that is toxic is is a problem.
Yeah, well, yeah, but whatever gets accumulated on the trucks on the roads.
Whatever. If this was, I think it's just it. I think it's the upper limit, Hal, maybe is that, you know, what what is the upper limit that we're comfortable with?
Throw it in.
Or no limit.
The number, because if we have, if this was, if someone's proposing having a parking lot for fifty electric ice cream trucks.
They'd have to be inside.
They'd be it. Well, that's true. They'd be inside. But frankly.
No, I mean, by the regulation.
By the regulation, we'd say what they that's true. But I don't offhand, I'd say, I don't know why, because why would we?
They get dirt. You don't know what they get get contaminated with driving around. And then it rains.
Okay.
Then you want to collect all the rainwater.
I think you have to, um, this is Diane. I think you have to be careful about requiring the trucks to be inside cuz that was not part of the the amendment, and that was not discussed during the public hearing.
No, no, that's for the W R P D.
So if you say that the trucks basically need to be inside unless they can't be inside based on building or fire codes on the applicant might have to put his big diesel trucks inside. And I don't think he's I don't think that was part of the application.
He can't only the propane trucks.
Now, not that propane.
Not propane contain. It's not propane. Driven trucks. It's propane containment. I mean, it's the ones that are delivering propane.
Okay.
So this this exemption will be particularly for trucks that deliver propane.
Yes, it's only the.
Okay.
That's all we're talking about.
Hmm. Okay, so that should be clear then, delivery and not diesel trucks.
No, it's.
Or gas truck, you know, gas trucks.
That's not what we're talking about. It's still it's allowing outside storage of trucks that are delivering propane.
Delivering propane.
That's why the number of fuel delivery trucks that really approach, it should say the number of propane fuel delivery trucks.
Correct.
Stored onsite. Shall be. That's what this is allowing. In fact, it doesn't. So if we're worried.
So if we got two two different things happening though, cuz the big fear for, I think, what we're looking at prior was what's going to happen with diesel fuel? And so that's what we're concerned with. Or what's going to happen with any other tanker truck? So that's what we're concerned with. In this case, we're just talking about propane trucks. So if we add to the fear to the concern is that, oh, wait, they'll get dirty and rained on and it'll get washed off. That's kind of a secondary thing that we haven't really talking about.
No.
So maybe there is a secondary limit. One is the limit of how many diesel trucks. That's because that's diesel fuel. And the other one is the number of trucks.
This just says you cannot have more than ten delivery trucks. That's what it says right now.
But was based on that was based on these were trucks filled with diesel fuel in their tanks.
I don't know what it was based.
And their fuel tanks, diesel fuel tanks, this this they right now.
Let's say powered by
power.
Trucks which are powered by
diesel fuel. These are gasoline fuel.
And then and then in that last bullet, it says the number of fuel delivery trucks. I think that should read propane delivery trucks, isn't it?
That's what that's what this bullet is implies is the number fuel. It should be propane fuel delivery.
Yeah, not just fuel because.
Shall be limited to no more than ten. And it doesn't really say whether they're inside or outside in this thing. It just says they shall be located on an impervious surface. That's all this says, doesn't?
Yeah, no. So I would like to see that number changed to six.
Not here. We're reading something into this. It's not written into it. You want to change ten to six.
And the six.
And you want to change the number of fuel delivery to propane fuel delivery trucks.
Correct.
And that maybe is all we need.
No, wait. So are we saying the business can grow no more than having six trucks?
Six propane fuel delivered trucks.
Correct, no matter what.
Yes. That's what we're saying.
So that's for and we want to limit it to that size based on what?
I don't know. I guess.
Well, that's why I say the only information we have is that we know the business.
And he said he'd be satisfied. He could live with it. He could live with it.
He could live with starting with six.
Right. And if he find out he needed more, he'd have to come to us for another change.
Correct. And in this case, we have to change.
Six, eight, or whatever.
And what would change? Why would we ever? And what would change, why would we ever grant it, if there's nothing different, they'll still get dirty, it'll still be.
Well, I don't know, maybe people will be more realistic, I think we're we're getting in touch with reality.
I mean, if you want to just change, if you want to leave the numbers in place, except for putting the six diesel on there, do it that way. Remember, fuel deliver of diesel powered propane delivery trucks stored on site shall be no more than six.
Why, well, why are we nitpicking the thing, why do we, I think we're kidding ourselves.
Well, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, but why, why don't we just limit it to six if that's what he thinks is. Is as big as the biggest business location he has now is six trucks.
I thought the biggest was ten.
And he has one operation, he said that was ten in Bridgeport.
And he was hoping to make it that make that this, which we would like him to do that too.
We would, right?
This is, this is Deb Jones jumping, sorry, jumping in, I believe the applicant said he could live with six diesel powered trucks and having the rest being propane. I I don't think it was just limiting it to six.
That's right, you're right. You should leave it as ten.
Well, that's what I I would be comfortable with that number. And then if you want to, and I tend to think that the propane, the number of propane powered. Vehicles could go beyond that, but then I also thought that what Bruce said sounded like a good idea. Building code and fire code.
Maybe we don't, yeah, but maybe we don't even have to identify it and just come up with a reasonable. Number. More trucks, he's not gonna use have more trucks in there than the minimum that he needs to run the business, he's not gonna pay for.
Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah, no, absolutely, but we're also like, you know. I think, I think ten is unnecessary. He it didn't sound like that was some, that if he wants to go beyond six, then he's buying a propane truck, or he's already got them, he's got a grant from.
I don't think he was okay with that if we allow ten trucks.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I I have one more suggestion for a condition that I think. That I think meets all the commission's concerns and what the applicant discussed during the public hearing, and it would be. Modifying that bullet point to say, due to restrictions on the storage of propane delivery trucks within buildings. The number of fuel delivery trucks stored on site. And outside shall be limited to no more than six diesel and gasoline powered delivery trucks and no more than ten total delivery trucks.
Agree.
All right, that sounds good.
Yes.
Everybody happy with that?
I don't know if I'm happy, but I'm, it's good.
As Michael is less unhappy.
You may not be happy.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if this stuff makes me happy.
Maybe you're just not unhappy.
Sounds great, Bruce.
So we'll make. So we'll make a motion to to amend that last bullet to Bruce's words. You, I assume you can repeat those words, right, Bruce?
I can in the minutes, or I can do it now, if you'd like.
No, we'll make a motion that you want to go over your words.
Yeah, sure, it's it's.
I'll make an amendment, we'll make the an amendment. Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, so the the last bullet point would read, due to due to restrictions on the storage of propane delivery trucks within buildings. The number of fuel delivery trucks stored on site and outside shall be limited to no more than six diesel and gasoline powered. Delivery trucks and no more than ten total delivery trucks.
Is there a second on that amendment?
I'll second.
Well, that's just replacing the first sentence, all right? The storage of these trucks shall be located on an impervious surface and comply with all other requirements. The section six point four is going to stay. Right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that?
No, the second sentence on that bullet bullet stays. All this is change, is the amendment to change the first sentence.
Yes.
For your words.
Yeah, so the.
That's what your amendments, we have spoken second.
Uh, just wanted to, Bruce, I I did listen to you very clearly, but did you say propane of fuel delivery trucks?
Um, so there's no more than six diesel and gasoline trucks and no more than ten total delivery trucks.
No, but we want to say propane fuel delivery trucks. Isn't that what we said?
Yes, I believe so, because that makes it, because it's a distinction, right? Maybe we're repeating ourselves, but.
No, but it clears, it's very clear.
Yeah, I don't want anyone to think that this is like some other kind of fuel delivery truck all of a sudden, but. Clear, I want it clear. All right, that's all.
That's what the motion is supposed to say. So we are the amendment. So are we, everyone's happy with that amendment, then we'll vote. On approving Bruce's amendment, those in favor say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion to for the amendment is passed unanimously. And then I'd like to. To vote on the motion as amended with that amendment. Is there any discussion on 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 that? Motion as amended, if not, we'll vote on the amended motion, all those in favor say aye, aye. Opposed, any abstentions, the motion is amended. It's carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not easy.
And I got whole far organized, I got too many papers thrown around, I tried to separate everything into groups. Doing it, got too confused, so our days in conversion, that's. Held off, next item is public communications, does anyone on the commission have anything to report? For communications? I do have one. I do have one item was that. Received a letter from the town clerk indicating that Sue has been reappointed. First as an alternate and then as a full member.
Yes, two letters.
Lovely, lucky Debbie read the read the motion, because I read it and I says, wait a minute, something's wrong. Approved to be extended for another five, was it four years, five years?
Five years, yeah.
Five years. The staff, staff of any other communications. Is anyone on the, in the public wish to address the commission tonight? No hands tonight, then?
Nope, we're sorry, we do have.
Oh, we do?
We do.
Yes.
All right, Becca.
Hello. I know it's been a long night, so I just wanted to say how impressed I am every time I watch a meeting. I appreciate your collective depth of knowledge and attention to detail, and I think the residents have gotten are fortunate to have you all doing the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have our next item is our. Site plan S I T twenty one oh eight Rogers Development eleven fifty four Perquonic Road. Does see, I don't know if the applicant stole online or.
Yes, I just, I just promoted him to uh, to talk, so uh. Just just so reminder, this is the um, the Rogers development from before, this is the site plan in conjunction with the. With the special permit that was approved earlier in the evening. If there are. If you'd like, yeah, I can ask the applicant to um, present, or I'm not sure how you want to handle that, if you need any more information on it.
Does he have any additional information to add?
Good evening, everyone, this is Seamus Moran again, I'm not sure if you can see me. I'm home, I changed, I apologize, I don't have anything else to add, but uh. I I think we were pretty thorough earlier, and if there are any questions, I'm available.
Do you have anything else to add, Bruce?
No, I don't, wait, no, I I.
Does anyone on the on the commission have any additional questions to ask for the site plan?
I do not.
Yeah, I had a couple of items, I'm not sure whether they're applicable or not, but things like. How, what these units are, usually we see little. Floor plan arrangements, what do we do for things like laundry and are they in every unit and storage for the units?
They are, yeah, I I do have floor plans, if you'd like to see them.
No, I just wondered how, how, do we have a laundry servant, uh, equipment in every unit, or is there just one universal?
For the, for this, there's laundry units in every unit. A personalized laundry facility.
Yeah, what about for excess storage, if these are permanent? Units, I mean, do, is there excess?
Hundred square feet, I believe, per unit, right?
There was at one time, I couldn't find it when I was trying to look through.
I think that's part of the building code, isn't it?
Is that a building code issue, could be.
Not sure, I'm I'm not sure if that applies to conversions like this, the hundred square foot of storage.
Well, it it doesn't make any difference if it's conversion, does it? If it's a building code.
So I think the a hundred square feet of storage was in the old zoning.
It's in the old zoning regulations, I don't know how they, is that covered anymore or?
There's, there's limited um, storage that's needed for um, a new multi-unit development, this is a conversion. And so there are requirements are less recognizing that, you know, it's an existing building that's being converted to multifamily.
So they don't need to have storage?
Not by the zoning regulations.
Okay. Just need a bigger box than their SUV. Does anyone have any questions for the, on the site plan then that we haven't discussed?
Can I just ask, given, given that discussion, is there any limit to? Like people having a pod put on the property or. A a storage shed, or because I mean, storage is a giant issue in this world, people need to store all their junk. Are those kinds of things temporary storage units allowed on a place like this?
I know she shed sheds would be, I mean, you need a permit for it, there are some wetlands around there, um, pods, uh, Deb, do you know how we regulate pods?
I know there was some discussion in the years and years ago, I remember Hank had complained about some pods everywhere. Because when they first started showing up around town, but.
Yeah, we, at this point, we don't regulate them any differently than we would have shared.
Very limited.
There was some discussion, I think, when we were redoing the zoning regulations a couple of years ago and. We just didn't get to to that issue.
Yeah, I think that's part of why we have storage required in these, or we did have storage required. For apartments is that we recognize that need, and so when you don't have it, then people want to store things in. In another place, so. I don't know what people think, but.
Then I guess they just don't rent the.
No, well, I just, I would, I would not like to see all kind, you know, multiple sheds put up on on a property like this. Or temporary kind of storage things. But.
Well, sheds require a permit, right, don't they, or?
Yeah, but they're very, very limited, and when you figure out a permit for a shed, you know, and and there's gonna be a need for storage. Always is, I don't know why it would be, why a conversion would be different than anything else, but is that that building doesn't have a basement?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. So I, you're, we all agree with you, Michael, we all.
There's a rack outside.
Leave it out there all the time. You know, or they're, you know, whatever it is that they have, their skis or. There, you know, Jeff, where do you keep your skis, not in your living room?
My condo has the big closet.
Would seem like, I mean, there's a lot of things that people have that. Seem like storage is always an issue, but.
So when we did the um, zoning regulation update that was conflicting. Concerns about storage and multi-unit developments and um, it was a big discuss. Discussion about it, I think at that point, we did decide to reduce the amount of storage. Required for multi-unit developments, it doesn't mean you you can look at that issue again in the future. And see if you want to change the regulations at this, you know, at this point, maybe in the next text amendments or whatever. Because it is, um, some people thought, let the market. You know, decide if the if the developer wanted to a- add storage. That was one of his marketing tools. Now, other people thought that we should keep it in the regulations, so.
And my my feeling is, is that if a developer has an opportunity to take a hundred square feet per unit. And in this here five hundred square feet, he's gonna put in another apartment.
Right, um, the the ones up on um, Pleasant Valley Road North, the ones that were built up there. That's one of the selling points is their big storage areas, they each have those, those from the old regulations. A hundred square feet of storage space and the developer said that's what people are looking for.
Oh, really?
So I think it's a lot of, I think it's a lot of Navy people too that have a lot of stuff, but I think everybody has a lot of stuff these days, so.
Then then you've got to go up to the U-Haul and store your stuff there.
So it's something to look at in the future.
And I understand that this was, I mean, we're looking at a site plan here, but. Bunch of the. Community space was actually going to be reduced because this was based on the old numbers. So is this site plan actually valid?
The public use, yeah, so what you have for you is valid, we were in before the tax amendment changes. So the public use space of like fifty thousand one hundred and thirty-five square feet, something like that, that's still what we're held to. That's because it's a special permit and a site plan application, we elected to move forward and we will ultimately. Submit a site plan modification application at some point in the future. To reduce the the public use space, because right now fifty thousand square feet takes up, you know, more than our development. More than other develop part of our site, so we will ultimately revise the plan in the future, but before you right now is. Is correct.
Okay, it meets the requirement.
Is there a, is there an opportunities somewhere in here to find? Like a common room or someplace that people could put things that, you know, lockers or something? Even if it was just for the whole building, one room, bicycles?
So they retained Rusty Sergeant as the architect, and we could, I can certainly. Present that to him and see if, see if there's something you can do to have a closet for communal space or communal storage.
That's something that we want to ask for or require?
Or is that a technical item?
Yeah, I mean, it could be, I, I don't, you know, however it goes, but it would seem to me that it would be beneficial for. For us not to have, you know, bicycles on the rack. Every, you know, or a person would, or be, I don't know, an outdoor sort of. A door that would be able to access from the outdoors that they could bring. Those kinds of things inside and they're not locking them up in the. Public way. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with a technical item.
And you see if you can address this as a technical item.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to look into that.
Yeah, why don't we, because without looking at the floor plans, I mean, we haven't, didn't look at them before, I mean, it's tough to see. What we can do, rather than trying to resolve it tonight.
Okay, yeah, I can look into that, they all, I believe all the units do have small patios and. Porches for storage too, but um, I can certainly work with the applicant to see. Yeah, and, yeah, and the architect, see where we can do for additional storage.
All right. So are any other comments? I'm not going to ask any more questions now.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve site plan twenty-one oh eight for Rogers. Development eleven fifty-four for Quantic Road with the following modifications. One, that the site parking shall be reduced to comply with section eight point two of the zoning regulations. The site plan shall be revised to incorporate this revision prior to the recording of the final MYRs. Two, that the walking path and benches as depicted. On the Recreation Community Space Concept Plan shall be shown on a revised site plan. Three, that the air conditioning, air conditioner condensers on the western side of the existing building shall be screened to comply. With standards of section eight point one dash seven. Point B, the site plan shall be revised to incorporate this revision prior to the. Prior to recording of the final MYRs, four technical items is raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
I would second that.
So moved in second, hey, discussion on the motion? Motion to approve the site plan twenty-one oh eight, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, extensions, motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you everyone for your time tonight, sorry for the late night. Have a good night.
Night. Days in conversion, that's applicable, next item. Is SIT twenty-one thirteen Cutler Elementary School sign, which is now, what is it? Mystic Magnet School or whatever it is. This different, I don't know.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Rick Norris, two-two-four West Shore Avenue, speaking for the Department of Public Works. We have brought to you a request for site plan approval for a sign for the. The Mystic River Magnet School, long name for, for a small sign. But I've also brought with me our architect, Joe Banks from Perkins Eastman, who, who will show you the sign that. We have worked hard to make sure it complies to all the regulations, so. Joe, I'll let you take it and run it through the site plan and the sign and, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. For you folks, thank you. I hope Joe got promoted.
Yep. Guys can give me just a moment to pull those up, sorry.
They're looking up.
Yep. Got a couple monitors going here, so.
Oh, really? It's funny that you said you were looking up.
All right, I was lulled into a, a sense of complacency with. The length of the meeting, so.
Looks like a filing cabinet. Oh, okay.
That's what he's looking at, x-ray vision.
While I'm pulling this up, I'll just ask, so the, I believe the application was distributed to everyone?
We have a copy of the drawings.
Yeah, that will, that will be all that I'll be presenting tonight, so if you guys can refer to those in the interim. While I pull this one up, it saves us a little time. I can, I can share a screen if you'd like. Oh, that, that'd be very helpful, okay, I'm, I'll still be pulling these up for backup. Okay, so I guess the, the first thing I'll, I'll do is ask if there's any specific questions. Based on you guys' review of these, of this application, first of all.
Can you show us where the sign goes?
Sure, yeah, it's in the, if you keep scrolling down. And zoom in pretty much right in the middle of that page at the bottom near where it says Fishtown Road in large letters. I don't know if everybody can see, but it's labeled forty-four LM right there.
Oh, okay, I see it, yeah.
Yeah. That's the location, and you'll see that the setbacks comply with the, the regulations there. And in terms of the sign itself, this is basically very similar to what you saw. For the middle school, with the exception that the sign's a bit smaller. The digital display and you'll see how we're, how we're measuring all that. Area here. Is in compliance with the regulations, the height and size of the sign as well. Beyond that, I mean, I'm, I'm keeping it simple, but we, we think that this is, this is compliant with the, with the current zoning regulations.
Staff have any comments on the sign?
This is Diane Gomboski, and now the, the sign meets the setback requirements and it meets the height and. Or footage requirements for a freestanding sign in this zone. It also is designed pretty much consistent with the sign for the Cutler Middle School, so it has the brick on the bottom. And then the digital display and the lettering on top of the digital display for, for the actual school. So we don't have any issues with it.
The digital colors are okay?
And there's.
Number of colors, they meet the regs.
Two digital display colors, they got a determination from the. The zoning official on that. I guess, Rick, if you want to clarify that, he said the background isn't part of the colors, so.
Right, we did, we did for, we did go to the, the building official, zoning official for two items, one was how to measure the sign. Which we came in just slightly under the twenty-four square feet allowed. We did get a clarification on. What it meant by two colors, and the two colors is the letters. So the black background of the digital display does not count as one of the colors. We also, in this zone, we're allowed an eight-foot sign. We opted again to keep it shorter like the other ones, also to provide some. Some less light carryover or less light. Issues for the neighbors, so we kept it down at the lower level at six feet. And like I said, we, we did thoroughly review the regulations and. It's a similar end design to the middle school and also what will be. At Thames River Magnet School also.
All right. Anything else for you, from you, Diane? I'll open it up to the commission for questions. I'll go backwards this time, I'll start with you, Kevin.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, do you have any questions?
Sorry, I was muted, no questions, thank you very much.
No eating pizza during the meeting. Okay, Hal, Hal, do you have any questions?
I have any questions on, on this sign, it looks fine, so. We're missing a, a sign though, how about for the other entrance, which actually gets you back to the.
No, we typically only have one main sign for the building, this is, this happens to be. The bus loop, if you will, the parent, parent drop off comes in the driveway to the left, if you will. And comes in around and, and does the drop off, so this is, this is the bus loop or would be the entrance for events and, and those sorts of things.
Yeah, I, I get that, but isn't, I mean, part of the sign program, there's going to be another sign, I mean.
You'll be able to see the sign down the road, if you will, I mean, it's. There's those sideline issues, the. Lettering will be of sufficient size that you could read it from either driveway, if you would.
Yeah, I think this is fine, because it'll be recognizable and frankly. Get anywhere near here, you'll see the school, so it'll be fine, but obviously. Coming south on Fishtown, the first driveway you're going to come into is, is the one you should be turning into for most of everybody. And so we know we're going to get a sign there. Because we don't want everybody coming into this, this way, so. Are we going to see another thing for some of the?
If, if the first driveway you're talking about is on the right side, right, where the large tree is, that's a service entrance.
No, no, not the one on the right side, on the left side, what's being pointed to there.
This one.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that all the little kids are going to be driving in on. And frankly, that's the one to get into most of the parking lot, so that's actually.
Well, we can't put away, we can't put away finding sign there, I mean, that's.
Assuming there would be a wayfinding sign to, to, if, if only to limit who goes in there or just to make it clear. Otherwise, all guests are going to be coming in the wrong way.
Well, typically, and typically what we did, and we, we could put a sign there that says parent drop off, if you will. Which we typically have at the high school, middle school is wayfinding signs.
Right.
So that's, we could take that comment and our advisement, put a sign there. For a parent drop off as a directional sign for those folks, so they know what driveway to go into.
I think if you just don't come up with the program for it, then they're going to show up afterwards. And each principal will do his own thing, so I think. To know, we have the same problem everywhere, so. All right.
Mike, do you have any?
Thank you, Jeff, the only, I, it never occurred to me before, but is there anything that limits the hours of these? I'm not a fan of these things, do they turn off at a certain hour?
There is, there is a nighttime function on these signs where they're dimmed, if you will.
When, when do they turn off and when do they?
Well, we'll have to set that up.
Is that the case with all the signs that we've looked at?
Yes.
Okay, good.
There is a dimming function, we'll work with the school, you know, their events run till nine o'clock, ten o'clock, we'll work with them to. To put that nighttime.
I guess, it never occurred to me, because this is, there's a residential. Component to this neighborhood and I would. You know, three o'clock in the morning, there's no need for them to be.
Right, understand.
Okay, that's it, no other questions.
All right, does anyone else have anything else to add? Not, then I'll make a motion to approve the site plan SIT twenty-one dash thirteen for the. Actually, it should be Mystic River.
Well, it, it says Cutler Elementary because that's what we're required to.
Okay, then they'll say for the Cutler Elementary School sign one sixty Fishtown Road. With the following modification, one, any staff technical items shall be addressed. Is there a second? Any, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then we'll vote on the, on the motion for the Cutler Elementary School sign, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, any extensions, motion is carried unanimously.
Thank, thank you, thank you, folks, I hope your reading doesn't go on too much longer, I know it's getting late into the evening here, so. Thank, thank you again.
Okay, next item, we have, it's. No, no business, no applications, I see we have Cardinal Honda modification.
And we recently received a special permit and site plan application for micro apartments at Factory Square, so seeing that.
Okay. Now we have referrals, we have ZBA twenty-one oh five. The KM for Central Hall Carports. Staff have any? Report on this item?
This is for the carports. Behind the thirty-six West Main Street. And I don't know if you ever saw them before, maybe not, maybe they. In process for a long time, but I don't think you saw them, Bruce, can you put up the? You have the plans, Bruce?
Scroll down a little bit more, Bruce.
They're down toward the.
Yeah, right there. Yeah. Go back, up into the site plan. Here we go, right there.
Right here, okay.
That's fine. So they're looking at putting two carports. In back of the building where they have their, I think they have twelve parking spaces to serve the central hall condominiums. And they're trying to put the carports over the parking spaces, at least for some of them. They are asking for a couple of variances, basically to reduce the side yard setbacks. From ten to zero feet on both sides, and to reduce the rear yard setback from ten feet. And they've requested one point four feet and one point five feet. So one of those carports is at one point four feet from the rear property line, and the other one is at one point five feet from the rear property line. They did have an issue with making sure the fire marshal was okay, because that's a fire lane back there. So I think that's where they had to redesign the carports to make sure they could get the fire truck through there. They will, if this gets approved, they will be coming for site plan approval with you. From a planning standpoint, we don't think it's a great idea to be putting carports at zero property line. Unless you had zero lot line agreements, because that, the. It's not really clear how those carports are going to drain and draining over a property line. It's not a great idea from a planning standpoint. They will have to deal with drainage also, because those parking spaces right now are currently pervious. And by putting a carport overhead, they are making them impervious, an impervious area, so they will have to deal with some drainage issue. I don't know what to say about the variance. Um, yeah.
We'll address these in a site plan when it comes to us.
We will be seeing a site plan if they get the variance.
Right. Which would address your concerns.
Didn't we already not approve this? Previously, wasn't this?
There was a carport that was on, attached to the building.
These are free.
These are down in the parking lot behind a Tiff building.
Yeah, and then there's, there was a shed right behind the building here that you approve. You never approved the actual carports for this site. You approved the carport or next to the central hall building right by the um gravel, uh gravel street pump station.
That was a, a zoning board of appeals that approved that.
That was a variance also, yes.
Yeah, I thought so. Uh, wh- when you talk about zero lot lines, does that, what part of, is, are we looking at the building like, like if there's a gutter on it? Is that at zero or is something else? What, what is actually at zero?
The actual structure is at zero.
So if it includes a gutter or something like that, that part of that building is at zero.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know how you get out of a carport. And and I, we had a lot of issues with these things, I think. I, I would have issues with it. I, I think it's going to be, you know, we're trying to jam a lot into this property and I would have concerns. I, I certainly wouldn't make no comment, but maybe something. Zero lot line is a concern. Just accessing something like that, backing out into what? I don't even know. How you get, how you get in and out of your vehicle when it's, when you have to go on to the next property?
Well, you can't.
It's like it's problematic.
It's a fence there.
Yeah.
Well, the access to the property.
You could probably, you could probably say something like, um, you don't recommend zero lot lines unless there's agreement with your adjacent properties or maintenance, construction and whatever.
Drainage, right.
Drainage.
Yeah, and I would have drainage issues too. I mean, you know, this is, there's a lot of business on this piece of property going on.
I don't know, what, what, once you put gutters onto these, as you saw what the elevations look like, these, put gutters onto these things, I think the drainage is is very controllable. It's not, it's not a bunch of water that now they're capturing, but now at least you can pipe it someplace. So.
Well, you're, I suppose.
I think we're probably doing okay there, but in terms of maintenance, uh, the only way to maintain it is by getting it to the neighbor's lot on that uh north side. So we need, still need a, a zero lot line agreement because you can't maintain your building.
Not very easily.
So should we make that as a comment that we're concerned with?
But I don't even know if one point, what was it, one point four feet? Is that sufficient? I mean, you're not even getting a ladder on something like that. I don't know.
Way better than zero, but it's still not very good.
Oh, we should make it maybe as a comment that the.
We have concerns.
Concerns with maintenance of adjacent structures. Hmm, or adjacent properties, I guess.
Unless there's a lot line agreement, correct?
Yeah.
Right, and, and someone, Hal made the point, where does it show the gutters? I just don't see that.
Bruce, can you, can you scroll down, Bruce?
If you look at the last one, that, the three day view.
Yeah, there you go.
Shows them there.
Does it show gutters?
No, it almost does.
I, I don't think that, I don't think there is. So the point is, you're dumping it right on the neighbor.
Now, as a matter of fact, with those roof lines, you're concentrating the water in.
Correct. So gutters will be required at least on the, the outer sides.
On the zero lot line side?
Right.
Well, look at that one in the upper side point there. There's no gutter on that side. I guess it's just going to drain.
Yeah. Yeah, well, there's no drainage from that side. It goes one way or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to have them on there.
And they're gonna have, they would, yeah, I would, even that fence is going to have to be main, I mean, the fence is going to be at zero, right?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so that's, you know, it seems like there should be some consideration taken for that. Otherwise, that fence is never even going to be washed or painted or anything else without some sort of an agreement.
But don't we have something normal for fence line agreements? You put a fence up with your neighbor. He owns the, the opposite, his side of the fence.
Yeah, I guess. I don't know how that works.
Can we just make a comment for, we're concerned with maintenance of adjacent structures or adjacent property with a zero lot line or the reduced.
And I suppose since it's been mentioned that these drawings, if you don't show gutters, obviously you need them. So use a maintenance and drainage.
But that's site plan. We get to vote on that.
Okay.
Right, but if, if you, if they're putting the building at zero, at zero lot line, you can't extend gutters out there. So I would, I would comment on the drainage since they're not showing.
Yeah, it's strange.
Showing the gutters.
You want to say drainage, drainage and uh, and maintenance of adjacent or the impact of of drainage and maintenance of adjacent properties is a concern.
It is for me, yeah.
Can we make that as a?
Sounds good to me.
Commission uh report. You can write that up, Diane.
Yes.
Alright. Now moving on to everybody's favorite subject, recreation.
Time wait.
Yeah.
For ten, time to talk about this.
We're, we're hoping to get some direction from you all tonight. Um, so as you know, recreational cannabis um is now legal in the state uh for folks over twenty one. Um, and the state has laid out um some avenues for um municipalities to regulate it. Um, you can, you can ban the, you, you can ban the sale of marijuana um in town through the zoning regulations. Um, you can regulate it, um, set some standards. Um, you can do a moratorium until you figure out what you want to do um with the zoning regulations. Um, and I want to point out that there are some towns who have actually taken the step to ban it just to give them a good deal of time to figure out how they want to regulate it. Um, the, the new law says that if you are silent on, on sale of cannabis, um, you, you're going to regulate it based on the closest use. Um, the folks who drafted the legislation thought that the closest use would generally be um retail liquor stores. And in Groton, that is just regulated as a retail use. So if, if you want to just be silent on it, um, it would just be regulated as retail and allow wherever retail is allowed. So, and, and any thoughts about how you want to deal with this? I mean, and, and it is important to get thinking about this because right now someone could come in and ask for a zoning approval for um a retail cannabis shop. Um, and given that the regulations are silent, um, we have to tell them it's allowed wherever retail is allowed. And if you guys are okay with that, we need to know that. Um, but if you're not, um, we need to figure out a path forward because moratoriums or bans, those are all text amendments. And as you know, text amendments because of mandatory referrals and whatnot, it takes a couple of months to institute.
When does this go into effect?
July first.
So it's already in a.
Oh, yes, yes, it is.
The uh, oh, sorry.
So if we want to ban it, we've got to do something right away.
That's right. And I, I think I mentioned it in my, my cover memo. There's a parallel, um, a parallel path whereby citizens can actually petition the town council to either ban it or allow it. Um, and it's so by petition, petitioning for a referendum. Um, but that, that's, I, we'll cross that bridge when we come through if it happens. So, yeah. Uh, we need to know what, what your feelings are with regards to regulating marijuana sales.
Right. There's another issue that I, I think has to be addressed is what's the municipality? And that we have four zoning regulation, sets of zoning regulations in the town. Is, who's our municipality? The town and the city?
No, you're absolutely right. Um.
No, I think it's a big mess for Groton.
It, it, it is a big mess and they actually define municipality in the section where they talk about zoning regulations. And they define it as, you know, a standard municipality and, well, hang on, let me get it for you. Let's see. Okay, municipality means any town, city or borough, consolidated town and city or consolidated town and borough and a district establishing zoning commission. So that could mean Groton Long Point is a municipality. It could be Noank. I, it, it's not very clear.
Um, that's what I was wondering whether we should try to say it's the town council should be in charge of, of, of at least defining.
So, I mean, that, yeah, yeah, I mean, they can do it. They take longer than you folks do in order to get a referendum passed. I mean, just because of their process, it would take about three months supposed to a couple of months.
My, my understanding is that Groton, New London and Norwich have a special designation that we would be allowed more licenses for this.
No, I don't think it's more licenses. Um, municipalities, yeah, municipalities are allowed one for every twenty five thousand residents. So Groton, whatever the municipality is, is, is two. Um, but they have defined, they defined maybe.
Four municipalities.
Maybe, but you're right, you're right.
So that would be for every twenty five thousand people. So if you have twenty six thousand people, you can have two.
Right, that's right. So it could be that it's Noank, the city, Groton Long Point, and then two for the town of Groton, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, but, but I think what you're talking about, Michael, is that they have identified priority census tracts for the state licensing.
Yeah.
And so there's one in the city. There's one census tract in the city that's identified as a priority.
Okay.
But that's for state licensing.
And that would be limited to one per municipality.
No, one to the city.
Up to twenty five thousand from what we understand. I mean, this might be different than what we understand.
Well, should, w- w- we go for a more, either a moratorium or prohibition right now? It's until, so we have time to figure it out?
I, I, I think that's a good idea.
I think it's too, too messy in Groton.
It is, it is. And I think, I think the way you want to go is actually a ban. When you, when you do a moratorium, it's a text amendment. You have to set an end date. A ban, a ban would just, you know, leave it as a ban and then you can figure it out on your own time.
Can, can we do that? But what about the other three districts? Should they?
I, I hope they're discussing it as well.
Have we ever had a joint, I don't, not since I've been on, where, or a conversation with the other zoning commissions that might be beneficial with something like this to, you know, have the city zoning, have us, have Noank all in the same room together and have a conversation.
That's what I was wondering, whether we need to set up a task force for each zoning regulation. Each group would have a representative or get everybody together. Because it really impacts everybody and maybe even the town council in this.
It, it does. Um, it, it certainly makes sense. Um, it's just that time is of the essence, if you.
And we should go with, right now, we should go with a ban. I think.
Just ban it and then, and then.
Ban and start that, have a public, we should put that for a public hearing on our next agenda.
We'll get an application together.
Yeah, there to do that. Can we do that?
Um, I'm not sure we'll be able to get it on the next agenda given.
Well, we should get it.
But we'll get it on this absolutely as soon as we can.
Soon as we can.
Okay.
That, does everybody agree with that to just give us time?
Nope.
So we'll have to. Is there a, uh, if we just do a ban, how challengeable is that as opposed to a moratorium with a fixed end date that's way out there? So we know we'll have time to do something. If it's, you know, three months from now, four months from now, six months from now, at least that's no one's going to be able to deny that as well.
Well, I mean, a, a number of municipalities have banned it and really, and would look like in our zoning regulations is we would define what, what this use is. And then in the use table, we would show that it's prohibited in all zones.
Hmm, okay.
So.
I, I would be more inclined to go with the moratorium only because it sounds a little gentler and I have to go back inside and talk to my twenty three year old and twenty one year old son. And I think the ban part sounds pretty severe, you know? So I don't know if they would like dad for having done that.
Well, heck, with twenty one year olds.
You know, that means.
Tell them to go to Stonington then. Tell them to go to Stonington.
Or thirty year olds or forty year olds.
I mean, I, I think that if we did moratorium and just did it for a date that was reasonable, I don't think that this stuff is going away, but uh, just uh, and, and also I like the idea of having a date that we can work toward to figure this out. I think, but.
Yeah, I understand the simple, the simplicity of the ban, but I don't think it, it goes well because I don't think, unless we're all deciding now, I don't think we, our thought is that we need to ban it. It's not like we have some great moral issue. We have bars all through town. So go ahead. If you're going to be twenty one and want to, you've always been smoking the stuff before, but you know, nobody's deciding to do it now. It's not going to be near a high school. I'm surprised it's not closer to a bar. You know, bars can't be too close to things.
I mean, those might be conversations that we could have. But I, I kind of like the idea of having a, uh, I don't know how we could do it, but if the other zoning commissions could all, we could all get on board somehow. This seems something that is townwide. And then if what Jeff suggested is accurate, that all of those things are municipalities, then uh,
Yeah.
you know, how, uh, and maybe even the lawyer, our lawyer to, to weigh in on what, what it all means for us.
Mm-hmm. So maybe you give it a, you could say a year unless, you know, amendments are done or something like that, or something's decided.
You just state, it, I mean, you just put a change out to either one or, or a moratorium or a ban. And then you're going to change that when you decide how you want to control it. I'm not recommending that we say never, never have it. I just.
But I think Deb said you, you have to put an end date if you're, if you've got a moratorium. So we have to choose at least this end date. We can always.
Well, I know what happened on, if you put a date, say you put next, take a twelve month end date. Everybody will wait till the eleventh month and then start.
That's why. And I think that.
And they don't do any work until that.
That's right.
Because we don't know what the city's going to do and we don't know what Noank's going to do. And maybe they would just say nothing or, or, you know, uh, regulate it.
Yeah, it's complex.
And I would like to. Because if in fact they do that, then it'll be, make it easier for us is that instead of having to worry about it here, anybody wants to build one of these places, we'll do it in Noank.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'll go down to the Groton Long Point Casino and.
Yeah.
Sure, it happens there anyway.
My, my tendency would to beat him. I mean, we, if we made a moratorium, I would say I would have a, a shorter date and then we could always extend it if, if we felt like that we needed more conversation.
You can't, to extend something like the, it. It to extend something like the it takes a long time because you gotta go through a public hearing.
No, oh, no.
Yeah, you have to, it's done by changing the zoning regulation.
Right, that's right.
This advantage of the month of that, you might as well just ban it in the zoning regulation. Cause you gotta change it anyway to go implement something.
Right, so the point is, as a zoning commission, shouldn't we, in my opinion, ban it? And when a text amendment comes about, that we have the ability to support it based on what the town wants. We make that text amendment appropriately be um embraced or not.
That's what I think.
Yep, I agree. Michael, you wanna go get your kits now?
Yeah, no, they're okay. I'm just. I just, I wanna, I wanna keep this on on the on track. And I and I just have a tendency to know how things are and when you don't have an end date, then you do just what Jeff said, which is. You know.
Or you mess it up, so.
Or it only gets done after it's already someone else is doing it and then you're kind of following the lead. Of whoever, you know, and I I would tend to rather be proactive and to. You know, make these decisions and ourselves without having someone else make them for us.
Right, we're not the ultimate firewall here, right? There's there's a lot of other people who need to weigh in. I think Deb's point is of many other towns have banned it. We have the ability to ban it and we have the ability to change that within zoning based upon input. And so my point is, let's not play with the moratorium, let's ban it and then say we're open as always to a text amendment that that changes that.
We can keep it on our agenda for.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
Put it on as a permanent item on the agenda so we don't forget it.
Until we make a decision.
So.
And I like the idea of a public hearing on it, maybe or.
You have to.
It's. Yeah, well. I would like to see it uh, you know, sort of fast tracked or. Not, you know, that we don't lose sight of this because it's not the kind of thing that we want to um. You know, have a have no anger, whatever it is, and and maybe to reach out to them and have a conversation with them if that's possible. I think it would be beneficial to us if we did make a an uh regulation that it was consistent throughout Groton. Or as consistent as we can be and it's not, you know, that you can do this in the city. It's too too confusing and it's too important an issue, I would say.
Mm hmm. But I think to just take care of it immediately, if we put a ban out now. And then put it on as a permanent item on our agenda for every meeting.
Okay.
And start.
That's fine. Seems like there's like there's pretty much consensus. I'll uh. Take all of your advice.
So we can.
I'm gonna blame it on you when I go back inside.
Well, that's fair, that's fair.
We'll have a special seat bus run over to New London.
No, no, no. Your kids can get a petition together and and.
Yeah.
Get to the town council for a referendum.
I mean, uh, whether or not that, you know, there it's been, and the reason that they're allowing these licenses for these towns is that. You know, there's potential economic benefits to.
Right.
To that business, you know, so. Uh, we don't wanna lose it to New London. We don't wanna, you know, because already we have.
It's pretty restricted. It's pretty restricted, though, that money in extra income is very specific designated uses.
Hmm.
Hmm.
Yep.
Okay, so we will put an application together for a text amendment to not allow the sale in any zones.
Right.
Um, and we'll. Yeah, we'll get that process going then.
And we'll figure out how to how to work with the others.
Yeah.
Be a big item for the cog.
Hmm. Yep.
Well, I think the thing is too is that it's important because that that kind of a regulation is. People aren't gonna know what the rules are, but it but it would be most helpful if it was consistent. You know, if cog could do it, that would be fantastic, but um. I don't know.
No, it's it's it's.
Seems like the kind of thing that should be uh pretty much throughout the whole town and, you know, consistent. So that people aren't breaking the law or doing something stupid. Um, because they happen to be in knowing. Or somewhere else. That's all, okay.
Great.
Okay. Moving on, commission reports, uh reported chair. Let's see. We did have a a cog regional planning commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. Had a hybrid uh Zoom session. Only three of us showed up at the cog and the others were on on video. Unfortunately, we didn't quite have a quorum, so we weren't able to do business. Once you get elected to be chairman of that group, it's for life. I think Mike Cherry was on for I don't know how many years, because we never had a quorum to elect a replacement. But we did go over the uh what was in your package. The guide to less legislation impacting development and land use procedures that was issued. And reissued uh in the end of July. You did have a good discussion on that. This is a much better uh summary than what I'd seen before. And that's all I had. Does anyone on the commission have anything to report on?
Uh, I just would like to know when we're gonna hear from Mystic River School. With regard to that. Roof lines. I I did go by, I mean, I go by it every day. The Thames Rivers, you know, uh, West Side School and and uh. They they didn't do, I mean, they haven't gotten all the screening up yet, but it doesn't seem like they did a very good job uh. There as well, that big uh silver ductwork is very visible and it's. Uh, it's a, the building is in a worse place because it's you're at eye level and the road is higher than um. Than the building, uh and I'm talking about West Side School.
Mm hmm.
And and but it's the, you know, West Side School, they did a terrible job masking that infrastructure. I just wanna. See when we're gonna hear from them as to how we're gonna.
We were out to the site yesterday. Um, the screening's not up yet and I don't think it's coming until September. Um, so I mean, the rooftop equipment's there, you can sort of see. Where it'll probably be visible. Um, it's. I don't think you'll, I don't think it'll be as bad. Um. And I think if they paint the actual equipment that's above the screen, it'll probably be okay. But I don't, I don't know if you wanna see the video before they get the screening up or you wanna wait.
Well, it doesn't sound like we're gonna do anything anyway. We're gonna be able to do anything other than paint it.
Right, cause that's what the the condition said was to paint it. I mean, you can, I I. I still want them to come in and explain everything to you.
It's not like this is the first time that something like this is happening.
Right, and at least you'll know in the future, looking at other buildings.
No, like Three Water Street.
Yeah.
So. So we'll get get a presentation on that sometime soon.
Uh, do you want it before the screening or is up or?
Let's do it after.
Okay. No, they're agreeing to it, definitely.
No, I mean, just to see what it looks like.
Yeah.
I think it would be worthwhile. Anybody have anything else? Reporters staff.
Have anything, you guys?
No.
So you have anything, Deb, or?
Nope.
Nothing? Now we have uh the ASP report. Was attached to your package. Anybody have any questions on that? If no one has anything else, then. We'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Our next meeting is September fourteenth. Is there a second to the motion for adjournment?
Uh, I would second that.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm just getting old, but I these meetings make me tired.
Well, tonight was an unusual meeting.
I can't imagine the old days when we would go until one o'clock in the morning.
We we would have been there tonight if uh if we didn't postpone.
All right, thanks, everybody.
All right, thanks a lot. Good night.
Night.